Okay, welcome everyone. We have 26 participants dialed in so far, including BevCam. It's 7 o'clock and I want to welcome you to the Beverly Public School Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 29th, 2020. We are meeting virtually today using a remote-meeting application that has been provided at no cost to our district, and we have BevCam broadcasting and recording this meeting. This is allowed under the Governor's March 12th, 2020 order entitled "Order to Suspend Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law," Mass. General Law 30A, Section 20. This order essentially suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to be physically present, and it also asks our body to use technical methods to allow public access to our meetings. As I mentioned, we are being broadcast right now on Channel 99 here in Beverly, as well as being streamed over the BeverlyCam BevCam's YouTube channel. As a backup, I am also recording a local version to my computer in case there's any interruption to the Internet. Joining us today are the school committee members, invited guests for our agenda topics, and various members of the district administration and leadership teams. I will conduct a full roll call and attendance in just a moment. Through the use of the remote-meeting technology and with BevCam's help, we are attempting to provide public access, which in some cases includes public participation. For tonight's Committee of the Whole Meeting, however, we are not including any public participation, but we will endeavor to provide access and participation for our next regularly-scheduled school committee meeting on Wednesday, May 13th. Details will be forthcoming. As a preliminary matter, I would like to continue to ask Ms. Visnick to assist me with the technology this evening, specifically watching for people who want to be recognized in case the hand raise icon or the hand is not visible on my screen, and I'd also ask that she alert me to any new joiners or dropped communications or connections. For everyone, the hand raise button is located, I think in, I guess it's in all different places depending on how you've organized your screen, but I think the convention that we've been using with a sort of a hand in front of your face on the video is also pretty effective, and please do feel free to unmute yourself and interrupt if we get towards a motion or a vote and you feel you've not been recognized.
I apologize for interrupting right here. Everybody, if you, on your Zoom window, there is a Participants panel, and right now there's the number 27 next to it. If you click on that, you'll see a list on a sidebar of the participants, and then the raise the hand icon is at the bottom of that Participants panel. That might be the easiest way. I cannot possibly see all 27 people in the gallery view to see if your hand is being raised, so if you could, please try to open the Participants panel and quote-unquote "raise your hand" there via that icon. That would help me best be able to see that you wish to speak, so I can alert the chair to call on you.
Yes, I have the same problem with not enough space on my monitor to see everybody at once. So thank you, Ms. Visnick. Also, I wanted to let people know that if bandwidth or connectivity seems to be an issue, disabling your video is the best fix for that, to try to get the audio to recover if there's any faltering. I would also ask that tonight we do not use the chat function unless it's specifically related to a technical issue such as a loss of sound or the loss of ability to speak with us, as the chat could become public record. I would also ask that you endeavor to speak clearly into your microphones so that we have an adequate recording of this meeting. And please remember that any audio or video feed that's supplied into this meeting does become part of the meeting record. You can use your mute functionality or disable your video at any time you find necessary to prevent background noises and distractions. The Chair will endeavor to call to you to unmute when you are being recognized. So members, I would now like to conduct a roll call confirmation that you are both able to hear me and that we can hear you this evening. Please come off of mute to affirm as I call your name, and other participants, I will be doing the same for you in a moment. So starting alphabetically, Mayor Cahill, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
And we can hear you, thank you. Ms. Coelho, can you hear us? I'm not sure I'm hearing you or seeing you at this moment. Kimberly Coelho?
Madam Chair, I do not see her in the list of participants.
Okay, we will revisit that in a moment. Okay. Ms. Ferretti, are you able to hear us and can we hear you?
Again, I don't see her on the list.
Okay, we'll revisit. Mr. Mulady, I can see you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you guys, hello.
And we can hear you, thank you for confirming. Ms. Robinson?
I hear you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
And I'm assuming since you've been so responsive, you can all hear me and see me, thank you. Okay, next we have administrators and leadership. I would like to ask Dr. Chercheck, can you see and hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bergeron, our Executive Secretary, can you see and hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for keeping the official minutes for this meeting. Dr. Dorothy Flaherty?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Ms. Jean Sherburne?
Yes, I can hear you and see you.
Thank you. Mr. John Harmon? I saw you earlier, you're on mute right now.
Sorry, I stepped away for a second.
Likely story, thank you, okay, you can re-mute, we hear you. Ms. Bethany Splansky, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you for confirming. Ms. Christina Liel?
I'm here, good evening.
Good evening, thank you for confirming. Mr. Dana Kruishenk?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, and Mr. Dan Keefe?
I'm here.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have a number of principals that are joining us. I saw Betty Taylor join, and I don't know if she's rejoined.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Phil Codere, are you on the line? I'm not sure that I actually see him joining. Okay. Mr. Mark Thomas, are you joining us from the high school?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Thank you. How about Mr. Matt Poska?
Here, thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Mr. Terry Conant, I think he declined earlier, so I'm not expecting him. Dr. Deborah Lay? I'm not sure, I saw her except. Ms. Erin Brown? Ms. Lisa Oliver?
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Ms. Julie Smith? Okay, don't have a confirmation there. Ms. Gabrielle Montivecki? Not sure that she accepted either. Okay, joining us from the city, I saw Mr. Brian Ailes.
Here.
I think I also saw Mr. Mike Collins.
Right here.
Great. I had also invited Martha Lewis, but I wasn't expecting her. And David Gellino? Okay, I didn't see a confirmation. Our BTA President Julia Brotherton, a teacher, are you with us this evening? Ms. Visnick, do you see?
Yes.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Oh, there we are, okay. I thought I had-
I'm double-meeting, I'm gonna-
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. And I saw one of our teachers, Caitlin Orlando, had joined us, thank you so much.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Okay, so our invited guests this evening include a number of people for one of our agenda items, so we have Dan Voss, can I just confirm you can speak with us?
Yeah, hi, pleased to be here.
Okay, great. And then I saw that you had also included Andrew Bernstein. Mr. Bernstein, are you able to hear us? Not sure if he's joined yet. And then E.W. Tattlebaum from Kirsage Energy, are you with us?
Yeah, they may not be joined, no, I just accept that they're available, but I'm here to present.
I can appreciate that, thank you. And Ms. Beth Greenblatt from Beacon?
Good evening, I'm here.
Okay, and we can hear you. Is there anyone that I have neglected to call on that would like to be entered into the record?
Ms. Ferretti has arrived.
Oh, Ms. Ferretti, thank you for joining us. Can you confirm that you can hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, thank you. Thank you for joining. And one last call for Ms. Coelho, are you available or hearing us?
I don't see her, how about, there's someone by the first name of Megan, Megan?
Okay, is it Megan Hart, have you joined us this evening?
Yes, I have, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much for joining us, we appreciate that.
And I think that's everybody.
Erin Sweeney is also here, I believe.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, thank you, Erin. Nice for you to join us, okay. Very good. The supporting materials for tonight's agenda were distributed to members via a thread of emails, and I offer my advanced apologies from the Chair that the entire packet wasn't completed for Friday distribution, but it was very important for us tonight to have the most accurate and complete information. To members of the public that may be watching us on BevCam, all these materials provided will be provided in the public records on beverlyschools.org in a timely manner, and much of the information that we'll be talking about will actually be presented on the screen as we conduct our meeting. Finally, as a reminder, any and all votes or actions taken during this meeting will have to be done via roll call vote, as is prescribed for remote meetings, and the roll will be called by the Chair. Tonight I'll be doing it alphabetically by last name, just for our sanity's sake, to keep things organized. We are anticipating entering into an executive session and not returning to open session as our final agenda item this evening, so let's keep that in mind. I'd like to ask, whose turn is it? Ms. Ferretti, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd be honored.
Thank you. Oops, see on the screen here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic-
For which it stands-
One nation-
Under God, indivisible, with liberty-
And justice-
For all.
Thank you. Okay. Our next agenda item really is the superintendent's updates, and I know that we have the pleasure of being joined this evening by Kirsage Energy as well as Beacon to give us an update on the solar RFP. So I'm not sure, Mr. Voss, if it's easier for us to share a copy of your PDF or if you'd like to take control of share screen?
Yeah, so I think I'd be happy to share, but I don't think I can share while your agenda is up.
Okay, so let me stop my share. All yours.
All right, terrific.
I do the pledge, I move my camera.
I'm hoping that you can see the screen now?
It is? Yes.
Can you search it? Okay.
Yes.
Terrific, all right. Well, first of all, thank you very much for inviting us here this evening. We've had the chance to present a number of these slides and this material to some folks that are on the call. Chair Bell, Dr. Chercheck, and a number of the members of town governments, along with Mayor Cahill. We thought it was the right time at this point to preview or discuss, have a discussion of the layouts, maybe do a recap of the project in general, and then have a discussion related to the layouts of the solar facilities at the middle school and the high school, and effectively just take this opportunity to answer any questions that folks may have and take feedback and input, because this next phase of the project will be going into, will be permitting, so we want to make sure that we're all squared away on these basic designs. So this evening, I thought I'd give a very brief overview. We'll talk about financial benefits likely toward the end of the presentation, and Beth Greenblatt here to give an update on that, but I'll be prior to that giving a run-through of the arrays at the high school and the middle school. I've got a number of questions that have been asked up to this point that I would be happy to address broadly, and then I can give a real quick sense of next steps and then open up the questions. So I'm going to try to keep my remarks brief so that there's more time for question and answer. So let me get started here.
Thank you.
And I don't have my video running, just so that, just so that I don't take up bandwidth, but I'm happy to reveal once we get to Q and A.
Sounds like a plan. I was just noticing there was a little degradation, I wasn't sure if it was my side or yours, but I appreciate that.
Okay, so let me start with project status. Kirsage was awarded the contract, if you like, to develop solar for the city last year, first quarter of last year, 2019, and since then, we have completed the I N C with the green checkmarks, the, if you like, the design development of the arrays. We've submitted the utility applications that are critical to these projects and are the critical path. We've completed stakeholder group reviews of these designs. We've had a number of meetings over the last four months with a broad stakeholder group, including members representing the schools, but also the public and the city government. Mayor Cahill was obviously hosting those calls. And then we had a design review team or project review team meeting where we had the chance to speak with folks from the city, such as the representatives from the emergency services, planning, zoning, Conservation Commission, and other departments within city government. And so the designs that you'll see today have taken feedback from each of those meetings, all of those groups, and as you see today or tonight, we're at the school committee discussion. And just to give you the full picture, working in, if you like, parallel right now, we have five main tracks of work. One is completing the utility interconnection process, and we aim, we hope, we are working to get those materials back from the utility within the next eight weeks or thereabouts. We are developing up our permitting package to go to the city and to the relevant committees to get the permits required to build the facilities. We are in the process of preparing the paperwork to lock up the smart program allocation. The smart program is the solar program under which we're able to build these projects and deliver revenue to the city. And we're also looking very hard at the construction scheduling issue, which I'm sure will be a question tonight, but that's work that's ongoing right now. We're working with equipment suppliers and our contractors to work up various construction scheduling scenarios. So that's just an update on schedule, but we're basically in the thick of the project, working now on the areas that will lead us into construction. Obviously, I didn't touch on this, but the lease is with the city and is going through review, and as I understand it, school committee will be having input into the decision on that lease at a later date. So I'm going to walk now just through the program overview. At a high level, we've been working on seven sites across the city. The two largest sites are the middle school and the high school, but we have other sites, the city hall, the senior center, the youth center, car parks in the center of town at 11 and 10 Pond, but the high school and the middle school represent the largest projects. And you can see in this little table here that we also have a variety of technologies or a variety of structures that we're proposing to put up, including roof-mounted systems at both of the schools, also town hall and senior center, a large ground mount system which would build on the historic or the heritage associated with the solar facility at the high school. We would actually be leaving, and I can touch on this when we get to the school, but we would be leaving part of that array in place, so it would continue to be the longest-running solar facility in the country. And then we have the canopies, so car park canopies, and building car park canopies is by far and away the best approach in metropolitan areas. If you move beyond the rooftops, building canopy solar is really the focus right now of the industry, because of its efficient use of space for dual purpose. And just to give you a sense of what the portfolio right now is expected to deliver, it's about 3.5 megawatts in size, and to put that in terms that we can relate to, it's going to generate about 5 million kilowatt-hours of energy each year, which is effectively equivalent to the energy it would take to power about 500 houses. It would offset about 3,600 tons per year of CO2 equivalent, and you can equate that to sort of, yeah, to sequester that CO2, you'd need to plant about 4,700 acres of trees. And if you want to think about transportation, which is extremely topical, the carbon dioxide we're saving represents about nine million miles driven per year. So this is a significant project for the city, and it also has the beauty of being a financial positive for the city, and Beth will talk about that, but certainly from an environmental standpoint, it's an excellent project for the city. So I'm going to jump straight in now to the schools. I'm going to start with the high school. What you see on this chart in the top right corner is the original layout that was developed as part of the request for proposals by a consultant for the city. And what you see here, you know, the large part of the screen, is the current layout proposed for the high school. It incorporates the ground mount that we talked about. There's a battery storage system. There is a small roof mount on the high school, and it's small in size simply because of structural considerations when we looked at the roof and when the city's consultants looked at the roof of the high school. And then we have what's called this long-span canopy, and the beauty of a long-span canopy is that it can span these driveways in between the parking spots and in between the parking areas to maximize the solar for the site in the most efficient way possible. So it's a tremendous technology to use in situations like this where you have driveways and a large car park. That replaces, if you look up here, you can see almost a dozen separate arrays, you know, spread out across the school. All of these have been bundled together in effect, and the same capacity is being generated by these two canopy arrays, so a really efficient use of space and provides for additional development at the school going forward. The energy would exit the school down here at the existing sort of distribution intersection with national grid. Okay. This is a closer view of the canopy, and what I wanted to show you here was basically these green dots represent posts that are installed, and the canopy, it's just like a carport, if you can imagine that, sits on these posts. And so the key thing to notice here is that these posts are situated so that they're effectively on the stripes in between the car parks, so it won't consume any car parks. Where we can, we've put the posts on the medians in between the parking areas, and where we do have to put it in open car spaces, you know, we're plugging it right on that center line, and ideally on the crosshatch, but right on that center line, so we don't use up any additional car spots. What you see here is we're spanning the drive line, so we're basically stretching the canopy out over this drive line here, which allows us to, you know, bundle together some canopies that were down here on the bottom left of the property in the southwest, and bring them up and incorporate them into these long spans. So from a construction standpoint, and just from a general use of space standpoint, this is a far more efficient solution. I will say that, yeah, as part of the project review, you know, we looked at, and I'll touch on this in Q and A, issues such as clearance for snow clearing, emergency vehicles, issues related to broad access for fire, and we touched on issues around lighting, security cameras, all of which are being incorporated into and are being addressed as part of this design. This is the middle school. You can see up here the original layout for the middle school, once again had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 canopies in effect, ground mounted canopies on the car park. We've consolidated those into these two canopies here, once again, long-span canopies, and the roof system that had been proposed is what we're effectively building. The roof system already had been laid out in a very efficient fashion, and when we looked at the design and redesigned it, we came up with basically the same layout. So that's tremendous. And then we have battery storage over here. We've identified an area in the bus parking area that could potentially be used for battery storage, but we'll obviously work with Mike Collins on the optimal position for that. So once again, you know, the rooftop is very standard. Within the city, you've had roof-mounted solar installed on the high school already. It's low-impact in terms of installation, so the, there's a part of this project that is a little novel, I guess, today, is the canopy, so I'll move to that chart once again. So here is an expanded view of the canopy. The reason that it's laid out the way it is with a large gap in the middle is because there's a water management system in the car park at the back of the middle school, so we weren't able to position these canopies next to each other as we did at the high school or as close as we would normally do. And it's also why we've extended the canopy a little, you know, over this drive line here. Bear in mind, though, that these canopies will be sufficiently tall to allow free access for buses, emergency vehicles, so there is no issue with spanning over the top of a drive line. In fact, that's the design principle behind these canopies. There is an area here in blue that we're currently, we've identified, if you like, as part of this lower canopy, and we're just validating that right now with our structural engineers and confirming that that can actually be built in this way, and if not, then we would spread this capacity in other areas of the canopy or perhaps, you know, look back up here at the bus depot, but this is our preferred design right now, and to the extent we can, we will be adding capacity down here in the bottom corner so that we maximize the solar potential of the site. Once again, this was reviewed by the project review team, and consistent with the high school, you know, we discussed, as I mentioned, access issues, access issues during pickup, drop-off. We discussed the positioning of the posts so that would not remove any car parks, and we discussed, you know, ensuring that there was sufficient clearance, as I mentioned, for buses and emergency vehicles to get in and around the site. All right, I might pause here for a moment and just let Beth, or I could walk through this, or Beth, if you so will, walk through the financial benefits?
Sure. Thanks, Dan. Thank you, everyone, for having us this evening. So as everyone is aware, the city put out a very comprehensive portfolio of facilities and sites for solar development under a comprehensive request for proposals in early December of 2018. As Dan mentioned, his firm was selected and awarded the opportunity to pursue that portfolio of sites, and the results of that initial analysis and of the competitive proc- And the results of that initial analysis and of the competitive procurement is such that there are sort of three different economic value streams feeding into the into this overall financial benefit to the city. There is some lease revenue for some, but not all of the sites. There is tax revenue. And there is estimated savings from the actual electricity that is compensated by the utility for for the production from the solar array. The combination of those three revenue streams is, in the first year, just over a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. And over the twenty year term of the overall agreement with Kier Sarge is just just under two point six million dollars. Now, you know, at this point, there are some factors that could impact the financials. We don't expect it to be substantial, but there are some driving regulations that were recently, as recent as last week, put into effect on an emergency basis, but they are not final and don't go into full effect until ninety days from last week. So we expect there could be some tweaking around the edges, but as you can see here, in addition to the environmental benefits that the city is going to realize from this and and how it helps maintain the city's position with respect to environmental sustainability, there's a significant financial benefit that will be enjoyed by the city in addition to, I believe, a very comprehensive educational benefit. There will be, and and Dan, you you may go into this in a minute, there will be the opportunity for on on whiteboards or any any facility that has access to the internet to actually be able to pull up information in near real time to see the actual performance of these systems by through a URL. And so I think, you know, there's there's some really wonderful opportunities to integrate this into the curriculum.
Great. Thanks, Beth. So with that, you know, I I pulled together a list of some of the questions that we've been asked and some of the issues we've discussed over the over the past few meetings. And thought I would run through them for the group that hasn't had an opportunity yet to participate in in these forums. So so basically, you know, the first one is 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 a very common one, which is what what does a what does one of these canopies look like? So I'm just going to tab down a little bit and give you a quick little introduction. So a long span canopy looks like this in cross section. It's basically a beam that is set across two posts that are set into the ground in in these foundations here. And then the canopy is is just effectively at that point a roof. And the solar panels are installed on the top of of, you know, called the roof. And so that's what a canopy looks like in profile. It's a very simple design. Now, examples of what they what they look like once built. So here are some examples of long span canopies. This canopy at the top is maybe an example of a a sort of notched canopy that has a little L shape, which is not inconsistent with what we're looking at for the southern canopy at the middle school. Down the bottom here, you see a canopy which is effectively, you know, pretty much exactly what we're looking at for both the middle school and the high school, where we span two rows of parking. All right, that 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 span there is about a hundred feet. And this is the sort of, you know, light that you could expect to have under these canopies, you know, during the day. I know one of the questions that has been asked is a question around lighting under these canopies and what it is like during the day and will it require illumination? The answer is that, you know, no, the the lighting is quite substantial. Yeah, ambient lighting, it is only about a hundred feet in width. That being said, yeah, because because we have short days, we are, we will work with the city and with Mike Collins to make sure that the lighting that is out there and the surveillance is already out there onsite is accommodated under the canopy. But during the day, in the mornings, you can expect a well eliminated area under the canopies. So these are just two examples of sort of the long span canopy as we would be building it at both the high school and the middle school, where you have basically two supports about a hundred foot width covering two lines of parking, two full rows of parking. So with that, will it interfere with daily operations or emergency vehicles? We've touched on that. Will it reduce parking spaces? You know, we've touched on that as well. You can see here how these vertical supports, the posts are right on the stripes. I could bring up a photo of a commercial car yard where they make use of every inch. And and you'll see that these pylons do not impact the car parking spaces at all. And that's by design. Will it generate noise or glare? The answer is no. They don't generate glare. They're designed to capture the sun, absorb as much of it as they can. And in terms of noise, you know, there are pieces of equipment on the system that that do emit some noise, the inverters. But, you know, it's it's on these systems, the inverters are small and spread out. So it will be imperceptible, certainly imperceptible at at in terms of the school. And with the neighbors as well, these are sufficiently set back that you you won't hear any difference in the noise levels. If you're a bud or a neighbor to the facility because of the inverters. The the battery systems we put in have a small air conditioning unit, which is similar to the sort of air conditioning unit you would have on your house. So they will run. But but once again, it's like a household air conditioning system, so it will not be intrusive. Will it cause disruptions during construction and what is the schedule? Well, working hard on the schedule right now and and the and the key point here is minimizing any disruption during construction. So so that's that's another question that is, it can ideally, we would say absolutely no impact during construction. We're going to work very hard to minimize impact during construction. That means making use of times when folks aren't in school as much as possible. But there may be, there may be some need to accommodate construction during periods of time when the school is in session. And we're going to work with with your professional staff to make sure that that's minimized, that any disruption is minimized. No hazardous materials or components in these in these systems. It's basically glass and steel. So there's there's nothing to be concerned about there. We've talked about the light. We've talked about the cameras. The canopy height, the the typical height of these would start at ten feet height to the bottom piece of steel. In this case, we'll be adjusting that as we study the height of the canopy meet to meet the needs of of the vehicles that are going to be passing under it, including buses, emergency vehicles and department of works vehicles. So so the height may vary by location, but typically it'll be between ten and fourteen feet up to the steel. And then at the outer edge of the canopy, it may get as high as sort of eighteen feet up to the steel. And then how will the students use the system for educational purposes? I think Beth touched on this, the 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 ground mount, for instance, at the high school. We're working hard with the, or we will, we will work hard with the team that has put so much time and effort into that site to make sure that we continue to provide access to not only the historic solar, but allow them to compare and contrast that with sort of modern system. We're looking at how the inverter shed can be used by that team to provide sort of some historical information. And as Beth said, we would have the ability for the school to tap into the production software that shows real time production and, you know, educational materials that would that could be used as part of the curriculum to the extent that that fit into your teaching regimen. So that that's sort of the the typical questions we've discussed up until now. I think at this point, we've had a look at that. In terms of next steps, if if we move from tonight, which is which is our hope with with questions answered and broad agreement on on the layouts, we'll move into permitting. And and that will be our next step. You know, come tomorrow, we'll be kicking off the team to develop up the drawings that would be submitted as part of permitting. As you saw on the schedule up above, we will continue to progress the interconnection agreements. And and the next critical step will be locking up the capacity for the project in the smart regime. And and so we are working on that right now. We would hope that permitting could be wrapped up by the end or, you know, early summer if we get started now. And then and then we're really going to be subject to the smart incentive scheme and the regulations and also procure the timelines as to when we could start work. And and clearly, that discussion of construction, construction schedule with the city would 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 help us define when we would start work. So I'll pause there and and I'll I'll turn on my camera and happy to take any questions.
Sure. I see Mr. Mike Cahill, Mayor Cahill, you have your hand raised. Would you like to go first?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Dan and and Beth. Just a few thoughts. First, I want to say, overall, we're incredibly excited to be talking about this project tonight. As as we all know, we've been working together for some time on trying to move Beverly forward on clean and renewable energy. We are just about to kick off our climate action planning process. I think everybody on the school committee knows that we'll be planning jointly with our neighbors in Salem. A one year, little little more than a one year process to to write a climate action plan. First part of that is inventorying what we currently our current carbon footprint, both as a as a municipal entity, municipal government, and then and then citywide. And we've got a real commitment to to attaining a level of net zero carbon as a city government. By that, I mean that in the electricity, electricity, heating and cooling of our buildings and the use of our few city and school vehicle fleets and how we manage our waste stream, our goal is to is to become net zero. In other words, transition off of of fossil fuels entirely to clean and renewable. So this project being a significant part of that effort in the near term is really important to all of us. Just a couple of details. You heard from Beth Greenblatt and Dan Boss. Beth is the consultant that we retained as a city. Gosh, but coming up on a year and a half ago. And Beth has been working with us as our advocate on all things solar, on on all of our work. And Beth was part of our team that was able to bring to award the RFP on this solar project, the set of sites to Dan and his company at Kier Sarge. So Kier Sarge is the developer, as I think you all understand. And and again, we're very excited. Just a a couple of further details on things that Dan and Beth shared with you. The, as as Beth kind of financials, and she mentioned the emergency regs, the State Department of Energy Resources issued emergency regs because the the capacity, the amount of wattage that was available to be developed under the smart program had been tapped out. So this extends that program. This is what we've been waiting for really for the last year. We've been moving, trying to tee everything up to move forward with this. And so now that the the regs are and as Beth said, a regulatory approval process takes ninety days at a minimum. So they're still pending. But that's if nothing changes in what's in front of in front of the the decision makers around approving those regs, then this is roughly the, you know, the area of of financial benefit that we'll see. Dan talked about the interconnection service agreements. That's the agreement with National Grid. Is there our energy provider as to how the solar arrays will be connected to the grid? How how will we able to move electricity, clean electricity into the grid? How we take our electricity from today and how we will move clean electricity into in the future? And that interconnection service agreement, we've been pushing and we're hoping those will all be finalized, as Dan said, in the coming weeks. Once the ISAs, the interconnection service agreements are are done, that's when Dan and his company will be ordering the equipment. And because of the manufacturing time that's necessary, that unfortunately, partly because the grid has been painfully slow in working through the ISAs and partly because the regs have been pending, we're going to lose most of this summer. We had hoped that we'd be able to construct during the summer. I think it's fair to state that we might be able to see Kier Sarge onsite doing work at some point this summer, but it might, it wouldn't be for much of it. Which means that as we look at the desire to do summertime work, particularly for the canopies at the middle and high school, we're left with the summer of two thousand twenty one. Kier Sarge will have twelve to eighteen months to complete this project in its totality. I think we probably all can agree that the ground mount at the high school and the rooftop work can be done without being concerned with disruption to the educational process as long as we are, you know, working together with Kier Sarge throughout the process. And then there will be a need to do some part of the canopy work before next summer at each at the high school and the middle school. And the question is, when and how can we best together, you know, coordinate that work so that it does not have an impact that that, you know, that that causes problems to the the operation of the schools? So just a few thoughts there and I'll I'll stop with that. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm looking to my committee members to see if we have questions.
Madam President, I would like to speak.
Yes, Ms. Visnick.
So I am a huge proponent. I, you know, the previous school committee, a long time ago, we voted to to do a project like this. I am excited to see that we would finally have solar on the roof of the new middle school. I certainly was advocating for that when when that building was built. So this is all good, certainly the bottom line of two point something million dollars, especially as we're looking at an incredible economic downturn right now. That's a fabulous number to see on a piece of paper. However, I'm I'm almost at a full stop hearing that we might be disrupting the building and and that we'd be doing construction while education was trying to happen in that building. This has been an incredibly disruptive year. We have no guarantees that we'll be back in school in September. But I just simply cannot fathom asking our students and our staff to be any further disrupted than than they've been this year. So I I guess I wish to ask the mayor and or our our consultant or our construction individual, is there any way that can be avoided? I just cannot vote to let our children have more disruption.
Madam President.
Go ahead, Mayor Cahill.
Thanks. So I I'll I'll let Dan speak to, you know, to the nature of the work. I would say that for the most part, my understanding of of the main concern with disruption is that will, there'll be a necessity of taking some number of parking spaces out of circulation. I think that's that's more, that's more easily accomplished at the high school where there is parking a little further, further afield from the main entrances, but more parking available on the campus. At the middle school, I think we know that there's a fair amount of, there are a fair amount of pickups at the end of the school day. A lot of parents come in and drive in and pick up. So we'd have to take a good look at just how much parking capacity we might be able to identify and in what ways Kier Sarge might be able to stage, you know, different pieces of the parking lot that might have to be pulled out of circulation for a given period of time. And I'll stop there because that's really what what I've had to focus on in in working that through. Dan, I know we've talked quite a bit about Kier Sarge's need to to really dig deep on this and try to be as creative as possible. So and and I know that this is a, this is a conversation that won't be, you know, we're not going to have this tonight and know all the answers, but but Dan and his team know that this is one of our main concerns. So I don't know what you can share tonight, Dan, knowing that it's a conversation that will be ongoing. And and there's a related piece, because I I forgot to mention before, that the the lease, which is something that both the school committee and the city council need to approve, is something that we will be looking to bring forward. is something that we will be looking to bring forward. I'm not exactly sure when. It's sometime over the next several school committee meetings. We'll be looking to bring that back before. And I know that some of these type of questions, and particularly this set of questions around how to stage and do the work in a way that's not disruptive, really matters to all of us. Dan?
Thanks, Mayor. You you hit the nail on the head. The 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 disruption that that I I referred to in the Q and A that has been discussed is is largely around parking. So in terms of the educational program, the the kids, and I can speak from personal experience here in Lexington, I I represented the town as a citizen with our solar program here, and it's how I got into the industry. But but my kids were in school throughout the installation of the solar on the facilities here in Lexington. And in fact, we're launching a very similar program to that that is happening here in Beverly right now with canopy projects here in Lexington. But the roof mounted and the ground mounted facilities, the 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 art of installing those with no interruption and no disturbance to students has been perfected. And in terms of the canopies, as Mayor said, you know, we're we're going to work very hard to figure out creative ways that we can, you know, minimize parking disruption, you know, and 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 at the same time aim to move the project forward over this next, you know, 12 month process or period. And that's really where our focus is right now, just looking at the schedules and 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 what can be done and how it can be sequenced to minimize the impact on parking. But that's, when we say disruption, we're talking about parking, certainly not, you shouldn't be concerned about disruption to the kids in, to the students in in class. Any, I I can, I can sort of underpin that by saying that, you know, any, any activities, very often, you know, folks think about the lifting that happens with the solar. But, yeah, those lifts and and work like that can be done outside of the school hours. And 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 then it's a matter of just simple installation beyond that. These are very simple systems. There's not a lot of hardware associated with them.
Madam President, Ms. Ferretti wishes to speak.
I see Ms. Ferretti's hand, please.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to add my thoughts on this as a parent who does drop off and pick up at the middle school every day. I I think I'm less concerned about parking as my experience has been since the middle school opens. Parents who drop off and and pick up tend not to go into the parking lot to park. They make other arrangements, and I know we've dealt with that in terms of the Cummings Center, you know, and all that. So I I'm not worried about parking being an issue. I I think I'm, I just wanted to hear, as far as equipment, would that be notable while the kids are, you know, in the school learning? Would the noise be so much that it would disrupt the classrooms? Or is it something that wouldn't really be detected while the kids were in session in the building?
Yeah, so, so, so we can, we would obviously work with with the city to make sure that any activities that generated noise that would, could, could or would be disruptive would be done outside of the, outside of the school hours. On the rooftop installation, for instance, the the bulk of the work, folks moving panels and screwing them onto onto racking, the the ground mount will 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 be, will not be noticeable to the to the students in school. So so you can sort of dismiss that as an issue. The canopies, once the steel structure is up, once again, it's just like installing on a rooftop. So the noise, you know, won't be disruptive to the to the students. And and if if there are activities requiring heavy machinery, then obviously we would coordinate that with with Mayor Cahill's team and school team to make sure that that wasn't disruptive.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate the the answer.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. I see your hand raised, please.
Thank you. I I guess I wish to ask the mayor about something Ms. Ferretti just said, namely, the arrangement with Cummings to be able to use their parking lot for, to help us with our school pickup and drop offs. It's my understanding that Cummings is hoping to build in the back of that parking lot and that our agreement with them is not going to be renewed?
I I think that's likely. You're right. You know, we, I mean, they've said they want to come in with that senior housing that they had proposed a few years ago and and then let drop. So it's it's very possible that that parking option will go away.
So have you given, do we have any plan? Like Ms. Ferretti said, not a lot of parents actually pull into that parking lot. The driveway is quite tight, and then there's a one way thing going on, depending on what time of day it is. So do we have a plan around how we would try to accommodate, in essence, ushering any number of the 1,400 students off that campus to an alternative place to to get picked up?
Well, I've been a proponent all along of of more, more families staging over at McEwen. I think typically the time is right in the afternoon. I think there's more capacity there than than parents can naturally use. But, you know, so that's one. Beyond that, I'm happy to, happy to talk it through with you and 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 look for some suggestions. I mean, Cummings has the, you know, they have the bulk of the space across from, across from the campus. And as as you pointed out rightly, they are looking to do some construction back there in the next year or two. Of course, I, you know, we'll wait and see if that if that comes forward. I don't know if they'll be moving forward with that project with the with the current, you know, state of the economy. I don't know. I think it's fair to say that as a long term answer, a long term resource, it may not, may not be there for us.
Ms. Ferretti, I see your hand.
Hi, thanks. That's a good point about the Cummings. That's actually a go to place that I, where I do pick up. But I do know a lot of parents do go to McEwen and other areas along Cabot Street to plan their meeting. And we should also be mindful that a large majority of the students do take the bus home and don't have pickup. But while I'm at Cummings in the last couple of years, I'll say I I really only note probably maybe 20 to 40 cars at any given times, and and they're not necessarily parked, you know, they're driving through, and it's just at the end there. So I'm not sure even if that option is eliminated, if that's going to be a a major impact enough to have to establish a a different plan. Because as the mayor had said, McEwen is a a very viable option as well that other parents who do, as I do, and don't drive into the lot, do know about, and it is just a short stone's throw from the parking lot. So I think we'd be in good shape, even without the Cummings.
And and I'll throw in my two cents, as a parent who spoils her children and picks up at McEwen, that it's typically 10 to 20 cars on the rainy days and fewer on the other days when I need to pick and bring them across town to dance or drums. So I do think that we do have some additional capacity. It's just maybe an issue of pointing that out to some parents that it's available, and it's actually a great time to go through there because all of the preschoolers are gone, and it's that lovely U shape. And if you have kids who walk fast, you can actually get out before the buses. Okay, I'm looking to my fellow committee members to see if there's more questions before I... I had a question from Ms. Greenblatt. With the pricing scenario, I believe what you're representing in that table is the entire portfolio of city products or projects? Is there a breakout at all about the the school, or it it's just sort of a a pre-fee menu there?
When the city went out to bid, it put out an entire portfolio of projects. And the analysis has historically been, while we certainly look at all the sites, the analysis has historically been the overall economic benefits to the city from the portfolio.
Thank you. I'm wondering if the mayor can give this school committee an update on any sort of benefit that would be directly attributed to the school budget?
Could, could Dan or, or, Dan, I think you were controlling the size. You might want to throw that one back up there. Thanks. So I'd I'd say, Madam President, that as, as you know, and Mr. Ailes often says, you know, it's all one bucket. All the money that we have to work with is really all, you know, ours together to try to, try to apportion as, as, you know, as best we can to meet, meet the kids' needs and all the other needs for city services. I would say, you know, you know, looking at that, so, okay, so we see lease tax and energy savings. So that's probably enough of that. Dan, would you also show the, the slide that that shows the breakdown of different projects within the the overall? Yeah, there, I mean, you can see, we can all see that the bulk of this is related to the two school campuses, three and a half megawatts, almost, yeah, just about, just about three of them.
Yep.
Oh. No, do...
Yeah.
I'm getting tangled up in the math, but, you know, the the overwhelming majority of the project is going to be related to the two school campuses. So there's no doubt that, you know, that the, the energy savings will accrue to the schools as well as, you know, a good amount of of the rest of of the, the money that comes in as, you know, as a payment. We can talk that through in more detail. I think we'll need to have, Mr. Ailes is on the call, but I I think we're going to have to look at that more closely. We didn't really have time between getting the updated numbers from Beth in the last couple of days to tonight to get into that. But, I mean, we talked about this when we had the the hoped for project at the high school that didn't come, come together a few years ago. And there's, there's no doubt that the schools will need to benefit, you know, from a significant part of that, of that total that, you know, that we overall benefit from. I just don't know what what it would break down $2.01.
Okay. You mentioned something interesting. I don't know if Ms. Greenblatt can answer this or or if anyone can answer it at this time. But the energy savings, that's more of a cost avoidance realization? And do we have that much expense that's eligible to have this sort of offset or cost avoidance?
So the energy savings is actually going to be a financial credit on the utility bills.
Okay.
The energy is is valued by the utility at a compensation rate defined by a tariff, and that compensation is is allocated to a list of utility accounts that the city identifies.
Okay. And with the the landfill that hasn't already accounted for our our bills, I know we, we as a city are trying to reduce the amount of energy we're using, so we only have a certain amount of usage. How how much of that has been sort of credited already? I see on, you know, some homes, for instance, people get into a position where there's no more credit to be had.
Yeah, so, so we are currently valuing, the city actually has two net metering agreements that are actually compensated under a different program at a higher rate than this program will compensate for the energy. But that's one of the activities that Mr. Ailes and I will be working on along with the team as to how how to fully allocate all of the benefits that these projects will add to the existing portfolio of projects that the city is benefiting from.
So in in other words, there's a potential that all that, that's just been outlined in the table, might not be realized. Is that a fair...
No.
No, no.
It will be, okay.
Yeah, it will all be, because again, it's, this is a function of a finance, it's like clipping a coupon. It's a financial credit that's hitting bills, and the credit is based on, on volume, on kilowatt hours. And many of your bills are a combination of kilowatt hours and demand charges that don't normally get offset. So these are going to gobble up and eat up a lot of those costs.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Visnick, just one moment. I see Mayor Cahill, did you want to...
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I I didn't mean to butt in. I just, we, in, in, in planning for the roughly five megawatt array at the landfill and for this portfolio of arrays, we've been careful and mindful of, of not oversubscribing, you know, with the, with the, why can't I think of the term, right terminology? Beth, help me out, the, the, that we did at the landfill and over at the airport.
Net metering?
Yeah, I know, no.
Power purchase agreement?
Yes, thank you. So the the power purchase agreement that we've done, we, we were careful in that, in doing that agreement out at the landfill, knowing that this was coming along. And as you rightly point out, Madam President, that we also have been and plan to and hope to get further efficiencies and and energy savings through other, other programs and efforts. So the the goal has been to make sure that we have the ability to benefit from all of these projects and not be in a position of not being able to take advantage of the, the on bill credits here.
Thank you. Ms. Visnick, calling you next.
Thank you, Madam President. So we're not going to be able to get behind the meter at all. We're, we're in front of the meter, no matter what, on all of these projects? Yes or no?
That is correct. We are in front of the meter. Is the current plan, yes.
And is there any option for us to get behind the meter?
It it's certainly an analysis, and I'll, I'll let Dan speak to it, but it's certainly an analysis that we have been looking at. There, there are some complicated issues with respect to the utility and how these assets get metered and some other requirements and technology so that the utility can maintain control in the event that there is some emergency. But it's an analysis that's ongoing. Right now, we're planning to be in front of the meter.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms., Madam President, may I finish? I I asked specifically because I believe the way the middle school was built, it was built to take energy directly as opposed to going, you know, through, back, back across, if you, if you call it that, and then purchasing it back and bringing it back in. Is that true, Mayor Cahill?
So, Madam President, thanks. Ms. Visnick, I, I asked the same question that you're asking every meeting, because I keep wanting us to be able to keep it and use it behind the meter. I think the the rub is that the way these programs, the way the SMART program and its predecessors have been set up is, is, you know, leads things in a different direction. Beth and Dan, I know Beth was just trying to turn it to Dan on that point, if, if you both could give us, you know, a bit of a primer on that, because it's, 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 always, to me, it's elusive to try to understand it.
Sure. So so I'll try and, I'll try and simplify something that's kind of complicated if you describe it in all its pieces. But, but basically, the, 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 the systems, we had designed the systems to be behind the meter originally, pending or awaiting the outcome of the DOER SMART review, so the release of their regulations. Because previously, the, the way that the incentives are channeled to the owner of the system, or if you like, the host, the, the economics disadvantaged facility owners that, you know, build their system behind the meter. In other words, they, they, the, the total revenue of the system was lower. And then if you had the situation where, where, you know, you had a, a developer owning the system and a customer relying on the energy credits, as we have here, the customer was even further disadvantaged and took greater risk. So we had all hoped that that issue would be resolved with the 400-megawatt review and the relaunch of the regulations. And as it stands right now, it still hasn't been adequately resolved. And the entire industry, Ms. Visnick, is, is, is apoplectic about this because we all believe that we should be building behind the meter. But, but the program right now, with your, if you're a well managed city like Beverly where you have struck a very competitive energy contract for your supply of energy, as the program stands right now, it disadvantages you to go behind the meter, you take more risk. And so when the numbers were run, we, 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 we were able to, with Beth's help, show the scenario for the school, like 502 Cabot, whereby, you know, just one little thing would have to go wrong, and, and, and you would be paying more for the clean energy than you would be getting benefit through the scheme. So in other words, you would be paying... So in other words, you would be paying us more than the value of the energy you'd be receiving. Um, and so that's why, um, the, the, yeah, Beth, uh, recommended, um, and we all agreed, uh, that, that as it stands today, going front of the meter while, while it irritates us all significantly is, is the best financial course for the city. Now, if, if, if things change with this current Q and A process, um, with the DOER, um, that may change, that may change the temperature on that. But that's that 90-day review that Mayor Cahill was talking about.
Thank you very much. I'm just doing a time check for us, and we are at 8:10 on our first agenda item. And I don't want to cut the conversation short, um, as I think it's very valuable for the school committee to understand what's being entertained here. But I did want to ask Mayor Cahill if we need an agreement as a body to keep moving forward with this project as it's outlined? Or is there an action or a motion that you wished to bring to us this evening to consider?
No, there's no action tonight. This is, this, as I said, um, the, the official action that the school committee, uh, needs to take on this, or that the project needs, would be the school committee's approval of the lease. But recognizing the, the interest that we all have in making sure that this project is done right, um, you know, designed right, constructed right, and, and so forth, this is really, you know, to get some of these issues out there and answer some questions. You know, I, I, I think that any, any feedback or, you know, further thoughts that any committee members want to send our way, please do. As, as I think everyone in the committee knows, uh, you know, President Abell and, and Dr. Trochik and I are at the table when these meetings take place. And, and we do, you know, try to keep these concerned and concerns in mind as we go. So no, no action tonight, Madam President. I'll also just say that the behind the meter, for anybody who's not clear, that's, you, you use what you generate right there, right? So it's generated at the school, it'll be used at the school. In front of the meter means it is actually pushed into the larger regional grid for use other places. You know, we'd like to use it on-site, but since the, the finances of the program really cut against that, um, it's still, the benefit to this is still significant clean and renewable energy being put into the grid. Uh, the, you know, our local to regional grid needs to green significantly, uh, in order for, for us to make progress on, on climate change and on our own, uh, our own greenhouse gas, um, targets. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Okay. So one last call to our school committee members. I think that that was an invitation to submit questions to the mayor, um, to communicate with CARE Sarge and with Beacon, um, to make sure that we have our questions answered before the, the next step, which would be to enter into the lease agreement. I don't see any hands for committee members up at this point, and we do have a number of additional items. So with that, I'd like to thank Dan Voss and Beth Greenblatt for joining us this evening. You're welcome to stay and hear the riveting conversations that we are going to have next about our budget discussions and our extended closure. But I understand if you'd like to drop at this time.
Well, yeah, thanks so much. And I, I may, I may take your offer to, uh, to depart at this point.
Understandable.
Good evening, everybody. Have a great one.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, looking forward to working with you.
Okay. So Dr. Trochik, I believe your slide deck will come up next, if you would like to grab the screen share capability. So the next agenda item under the superintendent's updates is our budget discussions. We have four items.
Madam President?
Yes.
I don't know if you noticed, but Ms. Coelo, Coelo joined us?
She did. She joined us at 7:26, or at least that's when I noticed, a little chime in my ear. Thank you for acknowledging that.
Madam President? I don't think my video is working. I am having some technical difficulties this evening.
Yes, I understand that our internet service provider in the town of Beverly has been challenged the last couple of days. I apologize. Thank you for dialing in on the audio. Please just pipe up if you want to be called on, because I won't be able to see you raising your hand.
All right. So I have shared out my screen, Rachel. Did, um, Madam President, did that work?
It worked. Can we hear you just fine? Thank you.
Okay, great. So I actually, um, as I go through, oh darn, this does this to me every time I have to go down here. Um, but, but that was the solar update. I just had a placeholder there. I actually, um, our first discussion regarding budget, I'm actually gonna, if it's okay, turn it over to Jean. She's done a, a great deal of work preparing, um, to have some information to share with you this evening. And so, um, I'm going to ask if Jean Sherburne, the Director of Finance and Facilities, could, um, join us and, and walk us through some of the work that she's done on these.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Jean?
Okay, thank you. Can we go to the next slide soon?
Yes.
So the first thing I'm, I want to talk about is the payroll and the extension of pay with hourly employees. Uh, we have, uh, we have 138 hourly employees that include the transportation drivers, monitors, courier, dispatcher, crossing guards, cafeteria managers, workers, as well as the elementary school lunch monitors is what we consider our hourly employees. Right now, you've approved that, uh, we pay through May 4th, um, or up to May 4th, and that we're looking for, um, direction on for the remainder of the year, since we're going to be closing. Schools, um, are not going to be having school in-house, but more remote learning. The cost to continue paying base wages for the remainder of the school year, which is set approximately seven weeks, would be $136,000. If we keep all the employees on our payroll, we'll continue to utilize them in various ways, including preparation for both summer and reopening, providing professional development and trainings, safety best practice.
Just real quickly, um, I'm sorry, did you say 136 or 336?
$336,000.
Thank you, okay.
138 employees. Some staff currently are engaged in the food service, uh, preparation and delivery. The other option that we would have is if, uh, we decide not to continually to pay the employees, uh, would be in the terms of laying off employees. And there could be a potential savings, um, of approximately $75,000. However, we rerun, run, run the risk of the staff being unavailable for both summer reopening and the current, uh, food service delivery that we have now. There is a possibility that the Federal Cares Act may provide some reimbursement for some of the services, um, which may include unemployment costs. We don't know that for sure right now. The Department of Ed has not even received the Federal Cares Act to even give us, um, what we could use those funds for, but we have heard that it's possible for that. So this is where, um, our decision lies at this point. You know, the one difficulty thing with unemployment and laying off is that the employees would be able to collect her in the summer, which they normally do not. So what we're looking for is, um, you know, permission to pay the employees till June 19th. We would send out letters of assurance, which prohibits them from being able to collect unemployment like we do every year.
Okay. So it sounds like the recommendation would be for the committee to, um, make a motion to continue paying our hourly employees until the end of school year, June 19. Do I have someone that wants to make that motion? Or do we have questions before we formulate our motions?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick and Mayor Cahill. Okay, now would be a great time for anyone that has questions. I see Mayor Cahill, you've raised your hand. But you're not unmuted yet, and I'm not fast enough to unmute you.
Look at that, I, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Sherburne, could you just walk us through the, what would happen in, in case of layoffs? Because you, you suggest potential cost savings there, but not, not, not guaranteed or some other risks that may come to trying to keep operations going come September.
Right. So, um, what they, what I, um, did for calculations would be that, you know, the cost to keep all the employees on their, uh, payrolls would be the $336,000. What I looked at is if we were to, so let me just step back one second and, um, point out that the employees right now are getting their base hourly, um, pay at their hourly rate. So many employees work more than their base hours on a normal year. School bus drivers may be picking up, um, athletic runs, additional runs, cafeteria workers may be working other people's shifts in addition to their own. And if they go into the, uh, layoff, um, or furlough, uh, position with unemployment, unemployment will look at the last 52 weeks of the year, calculate out what their earnings were, and then they'd be able to collect, uh, 50%, which, as you are aware, we are self-insured or self-funded, um, unemployment. So therefore, we would have to pay that cost. So that's where, and so that would go from the point now, May 4th, that we are, whatever decision we make, May 18th, if we want to go with the governor's day, um, of stay at home, until we come back to school in, um, in the, uh, August. What could happen is, you know, we don't even know what's going to happen then, too. But, um, so it could be, if we're doing remote, it may be even different. So, so I asked, I calculated out that cost with just an aggregate of what all of our wages were, uh, in the last 52, um, weeks. And I'm coming out that actually the unemployment cost would be, um, around $359,000. So actually, at, at that point, it was, um, I felt that it was better to be with just keeping the employees on. But if the Federal Cares Act does come out with that, you can get some reimbursement, which I'm not sure, but that's rumors that we're hearing, then there could be some savings there.
Dr. Trochik, I saw you come off mute. Did you want to add any perspective for what this means for our students, uh, keeping our employees as employees, or?
Well, so I guess the only, the only, uh, the concern that, one concern that I do have is, um, we don't know what the, um, guidance is going to be around summer and reopening and what services we may need from, if we are allowed to run summer programming to do some remediation or to run the summer school, we would have the need to have, um, some of these employees available to run the buses, or, um, if we're running the summer food program throughout the summer. So, you know, I'm, I'm just, um, I would just caution that, you know, in addition to them going on unemployment, there's no guarantee that they would be available to come back to work for us, that when in fact, we may need them to do that. So, um, for instances, that's a concern, um, somewhat. But largely, when we, when we met last, I think that you asked, I, we talked about what would that, what is the, what are the numbers? And what does it look like? And what is the landscape that we're talking about? So we wanted to make sure that we were providing you with the information that you needed in order to make a decision.
Okay. I'm looking to my fellow committee members. I don't see any hands at this time. Do we have any more questions? Or are we ready to vote? Ms. Visnick, you faked me out adjusting your glasses there. Okay. I'm really not seeing any hands. Ms. Coelo, if you wanted to speak, you would need to come off mute and let us know, because I can't see whether you have your hand raised. I'm going to move the vote. Again, we're going to do this in alphabetical order to keep the record straight. I'll start with Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Ms. Coelo?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Malady.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thanks, Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
And I also, Rachel, I will say yes. Okay. By a vote of seven to zero, we have agreed to continue paying our hourly employees through the June 19th end of school.
Thank you.
Ms. Sherburne, I think you're up now with some information about our full-day pre-K tuitions. Is that right?
Yes, I'll ask. Thank you, Dr. Frochek. So the next thing I have, uh, to talk about is the tuition refunds. So the full-day kindergarten, we have calculated out the reduction of fees due to the COVID-19 school closure will be $141,099.19. With that, we'll have to refund, um, 160 parents that have already paid beyond that point in the amount of $49,319. Under preschool, the reduction in fees due to the COVID-19 school closure is $29,184.47, refunding 27 families totaling $6,193.85. We're, um, in the process of, um, calculating these things out so that we can get the refunds to, out to the parents as soon as possible. The process of, um, the first process is for us to gather the information on the parents and set them up as vendors into the city's accounting program. Once we have the 192, um, vendors inputted, the business department will enter the refunds for checks to be issued by, um, City Hall at the end of May, uh, by the end of May is our goal. We have staff that's in working, um, this week that is, um, making copies of all of the data so that we have the accurate information for the auditor's office to be able to issue those refunds.
That's a lot of work, and we appreciate what you're doing. So thank you. I'm sure the families appreciate it as well.
Thank you. Yes, we are getting lots of calls of people asking. We did send out a connected message to let people to, to know that, you know, they do not need to pay for, um, the months that we are closed, but we are, um, still actively seeking payment for those that, um, were behind on their payment schedule up till March 13th.
Okay, thank you.
The next thing I want to talk about is the revolving funds. With the decrease in the revolving funds revenue that have already, um, already existing revolving fund, but, fund budget offsets, it will be necessary to move some of the expenses into the appropriated, um, budget accounts. Those would include kindergarten teacher salaries, preschool teacher salaries, food service, um, salaries would be over and above what we're currently having used for the food service program that we're operating right now. And building rental, there's a combination of custodial salaries and, um, utilities. So I'm working on that right now to come, come out with those calculations. I feel pretty confident that, um, our accounts that had some savings would be able to offset that. So, um, Brian can rest, um, a little bit easier that it's not that we would have to go to city council looking for funds at this time, and that I do not anticipate that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions? Sorry, I should ask.
And I'll be bringing that to the finance and, those transfers to the finance and facilities meeting on May, I think it's 18th.
20th, maybe?
20th?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
I think our next regular, yeah, the, the 13th is our next regular, so it must be the 20th.
The 20th, yes, on May 20th. So I don't know if anybody has any questions in regards to that?
I'm actually not seeing any. Oh, is this Ms. Coelo? Was that a hand raised? No, no. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Sherburne.
Okay. The next area that, um, I would like to discuss is the athletic fee refunds. The high school and middle school athletics was, can't see, spring season was canceled due to the COVID-19. We have, um, in our warrant, this current week, we have 144 refunds totaling $34,710 that will be refunded to the parents. Same thing, we had to enter 144 new vendors in order to, um, process these. These were a little bit easier to generate, because most likely, they made one payment and they made it online in our Unipay program. So it was easier to grab, gather the information. And we're using the same process and protocols that we have used in the past for issuing refunds to the athletic program. And checks will be issued, um, by the end of next week, um, for, um, to the parents.
Okay.
And if we receive checks, we are, um, handling it the same way as we have in the past, which we'd be destroying the checks and letting the parents know that that is what we're doing.
Okay, I see a hand for Ms. Visnick. Do you have a question for Ms. Sherburne?
Yes, thank you. Maybe it's not for Ms. Sherburne. Maybe Mr. Keefe is still on the call.
the call. I heard there were some rumblings that the MIAA had not yet fully canceled the spring sports, but was possibly considering having some sports in what most of us would consider the summer. Is there, can you, can you speak to that, Mr. Keefe?
Yeah, the board of directors is having another meeting on May 16th, where that is on the agenda. But the likelihood of that doesn't seem very good because also the MIWA right now is talking about possibly delaying the start of the fall season. So with that being said, how would you be able to play games, spring games in the summer if we're looking at delaying the fall season?
Right.
I, I think, you know, it's, it's a gesture in good faith on their part. They're doing their due diligence.
Okay.
Reality of it, it looks pretty slim.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any other questions from the committee regarding the athletic fee refunds? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Sherburne, if you can continue for us.
Okay, the final thing I have is the spring coach stipends. So working with Mr. Keefe, we discussed all of the things that were planned in the athletic department. So there were 10 sports that was planned for the spring season. It would consist of hiring 17 coaches and assistants. For a total stipends planned was $66,441. Mr. Keefe gave us a description of the things that the spring coaches have been involved with in the, with the students and the athletes, the week before, the weeks before the start of the season. The coaches have done things that include meeting with individuals, teams, and parents, organizing fundraising for the upcoming season, writing letters of recommendation for colleges, reaching out to colleges, organizing out of season workouts and showcases. The majority of this work is done by the head coaches, but they also delegate some of these tasks to their assistants. All of these activities in preparation for the start of the season are all done within the guidelines of the MIAA. And he has surveyed other communities, or he's been surveyed by other communities also. And he feels that this would justify a 10% stipend to the head coaches and $200 for the assistants, which is very close to 10% in most aspects. We would require a log be submitted, cataloging activities to qualify for the payment. So the recommendation at this time is to pay the head coaches 10% for the cost of $4,210 and a payment of $200 to the assistant coaches, including the middle school coach, spring track coaches, for an additional cost of $1,800, for a total cost of $6,010, which can be so reported by the Athletic Cost Center in the appropriated budget. So as I just spoke, that we're returning any fees that we've collected. We do have some funding in that cost center to cover this.
Okay, I think I saw Mayor Cahill first, but I apologize if I was wrong.
No, thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Mrs. Sherburne, Mr. Keefe, Dr. Trochek. This seems thoughtful and reasonable. Mrs. Sherburne, could you just, I know you, you just took a swing at it, but could you tell me a little better what's left in that budget? And how that typically looks at this time? I guess there's no typical. Maybe just, you know, what, what's left and where does that leave us, I guess?
Yes, so there is more than the $6,000. I do not have my report in front of me, but I know that there was a purchase order for like officials, because of course, we have budgeted officials that we won't be utilizing. And I'm guesstimating that that was a close to $10,000 to $14,000. So there's definitely enough.
Thank you.
And Ms. Visnick, I see your hand next.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, we got our packets fairly late today, but I know a decent number of coaches in surrounding communities. And my very informal polling shows a very different amount being paid to the spring coaches. And I wonder if we couldn't raise that, raise what we're paying if for no other reason than I know our coaches have been doing a lot of counseling. And we've talked a lot about how important our social and emotional well-being of our, of our students is. And it's, there's a lot of things that our high school seniors are going to be missing out on, but it's maybe a little extra harsh for our student athletes to miss their senior season of a sport. And I believe that our coaches have been doing a tremendous amount with the student athletes relative to consoling, if for, if for no other reason. But, and I think there's an incredible value in that. So some, similar to Mayor Cahill's question about how much money is left in that account, I'm, I'm wondering if we can truly afford to pay our spring coaches a significant amount more. 10% almost seems like an insult. I, I would, I would be interested in paying closer to 50% based on the polling that I've done today myself.
I'm realizing we don't have a motion yet on the table. We can continue to ask some questions? Or is there another school committee member that wants to ask a question before we entertain a motion? Are we entertaining a motion?
Actually, perhaps we should have a motion to be able to have the conversation. In which case, Madam President, I would make a motion to pay our spring sports coaches their 50% of their stipend, the head coaches 50% of their stipend.
I'll second that.
Ms. Visnick, you were silent on the assistants. Are you retaining the 200 per assistant coach?
I, I don't know.
Well, okay, so we have a-
Sure, yes, yes, ma'am.
A motion for head coaches at 50% and assistants at 200. And a second for Ms. Coilo? I'm going to put you back on mute. Okay. Okay. So the floor is open for discussion and questions. Mayor Cahill, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Sherburne?
Yes.
I just, I just did the math. So where, where does the additional $16,840 reside that would meet that, that motion's financial need?
Well, that I do not know because I had not calculated that out. Thank you, Ms. Visnick. But I do, do know of a, an account that there was a position that did not get approved, that there is, there was funding for $20,000. So I do know I could find it.
I don't know if Mr. Keefe wanted to answer. I just see Mayor Cahill's hand again.
Yes, you know, we, we've talked again and again about the need to turn money back at the end of this year. We're expecting a stay may hot for next year. I think, you know, we've been, but I don't, I, I'm not hearing that that's reasonable to the floor. So, Mrs. Sherburne, you talked about a position that wasn't going to be filled. I think there's a, a reason it wasn't going to be filled. I think the, the intention was that that money be turned back. So I, I guess I just, look, none of us want to say no to our coach, okay? Nor do I, but the, the seasons are not ending sadly. And so, you know, I, I guess I, I ask you, Mrs. Sherburne, what, you know, what, what was that position that you just referenced? And, you know, was it, was it not money that we were looking to not spend and have, have as an ability to turn back the bill at some point next year?
So that position wasn't filled because we did not anticipate that we would have the funding next year to fault, for the full position. That was the person to work along with me. So that's why I know that number in my head. I would like to, you know, ask Mr. Keefe, because he has the data that what other communities are looking for. I'm not sure if that's what the flavor of the committee wants to know what other communities are. We have heard the 10%, but I'm sure that Ms. Visnick has heard from other communities that were paying more, which we did. We had it, it was kind of all over the place. So...
I can, I can maybe speak to that a little bit. I, in terms of just hearing from other superintendents, it is, there is no standard. It is all over the place. I would say that some majority of communities are not paying any money to any of their spring coaches. If the spring season didn't start, then they are not, they are not making any payments. And it ranges all the way up to the 50% that Ms. Visnick mentions. A number said 33%. When we began this process, 10% was, was the number that a number of districts were, were talking about. So, you know, this is one area. It's been interesting as we've gone through this process. The regional superintendents have been pretty consistent and worked in, in making decisions. But I think when you get to the local level around some of these finance decisions, the, the consistency is right out the window. And so districts are all over the place in terms of what they're doing. And I think, Mr. Keefe, you can attest to that. I think you have a, a sheet that, that you shared with me. Am I categorizing that correct?
Yes, that would be correct. It was a statewide from the MSAA, and it was sent out obviously to all the athletic directors. And that document, it's, it's all over the place. And Jean, I had sent you a copy of that yesterday. I don't have it with me right now.
Yeah, I, I do have it, but I can't get to that without losing my Zoom, so.
Okay, I see Ms. Visnick, you raised your hand again.
I, I have a question and a comment. And the, the question is for Mr. Keefe or Jean, if you remember, if, in, in particular, if Newburyport was on that list. Because I can imagine that as, as surveys go out, not every single community answers. I'm just curious.
Newburyport was on that list because I know Mr. Gallagher was the superintendent there. But honestly, I do not remember what percentage. I mean, I can try, I'm just afraid that I-
No, no.
It's a document in here, in my, in my computer, but I, I'm afraid that if I reduce, I even had to plug into my phone into my computer so that I could even stay on with you.
It's not worth it. That's okay. It's not worth it.
I do know that he, it is, Newburyport was paying their people, but I, I'm going to honestly feel that I don't think it was a 50% one, but I do remember seeing it, that they were paying them something. I, I did see a third, I did see 50%. And then I did have, like Dr. Shirocheck mentioned, many that were adamant, we are not paying them the season did not begin. And we did not want to go that route myself.
So Mayor Cahill, I saw your hand first, and then we'll go to Ms. Ferretti after.
Thanks, Madam President. Dr. Trochek and Ms. Sherburne, and maybe Mr. Keefe, I'm not, I'm not sure. Do we have any, any analogous or comparable situations? I mean, if, you know, we, we want to have some degree of consistency. Are there other activities or programs that aren't happening this spring other than athletics? Is there other, you know, other stipended work that was anticipated that is not able to be done?
That's a great question. We actually, in the last meeting, brought forward, and we had made in, as part of our memorandum of agreement with the union that was approved at the last meeting, we had agreed that any work that had begun prior to the closure, so any, anybody that was on a stipend position that was done prior to the closure, we paid them in full. And we are requiring them to continue their work remotely, you know, as we've all learned, I think, to accommodate at some level the work that we've been doing and doing it in a remote manner. So as best, as best that can be reasonably expected. So that was the prior agreement on all the other. The only stipend that we had not come to an agreement on was the spring season because we were all holding out hope that the spring season would begin, and we would not be having a conversation about a canceled spring season. So, you know, that's where we stand at this point right now.
Okay, Ms. Ferretti, you had a hand?
Yeah, I, what I'm, my comment is repetitive. I, I was just going to note that, like all of you, I get the MASCE updates. And it is, it does seem like it's all over the map from not paying anything to, up to what Mrs. Visnick had said, 50%. You know, I, I think none of us want to withhold payment, especially at this time, from, from our staff. I'm torn between being conservative and, you know, showing, giving our staff as much as we can. I, I know that in these uncertain times, we just don't know what's coming up. We don't know, you know, we don't want to take money from somewhere that we might need for something else. You know, it's, it's certainly a tough decision, especially since there doesn't seem to be any firm barometer in surrounding communities, you know, from what I can tell from the communications that I've been getting.
This, this-
Yeah. You're not on mute now. I mean, you are on mute, sorry.
Sorry. This really is a topic that is all over the place. And, and it's, I think the, the essence of the fact that the season, that we're all, you know, hoping and praying that the season would take place and that, you know, we wouldn't have, be having to make decisions about this. I will tell you, the 10% number arose because I think at the time when we were beginning to have these conversations, that was what was the norm that was being mentioned across. So, you know, that number, I think, you know, any amount that the committees is appropriate, certainly, you know, fine. I just, it was the number that was at the time, kind of the standard that people were thinking about when we put together the original, just when we began the original discussions with the union, so.
Okay. Before I call on you, Ms. Visnick, I'm just going to check. I thought I saw a hand with Ms. Coilo or Mr. Malady, but I'm not seeing it now. Okay, Ms. Visnick, you can go.
Thank you. I think I, I just want to reiterate what Dr. Trochek said. At our previous meeting, we voted as a committee to pay 100% to any stipend employee that had started their work. And all our spring coaches had started their work. That's what this slide says. And we know that our spring coaches continue to, to work with our student athletes. So I think that a 50% pay, to some extent, that's even unfair. And I recognize certainly as the Chair of the FNF and, and being a member of the Financial Forecasting Committee, I've said every single one of our Zoom meetings that we've had, that we're going to be in for some difficult financial times. But in the grand scheme of 120-some million dollar city budget, returning on the order of $10,000 or $15,000 back to the city versus investing it in the individuals who are providing a service, an incredibly much needed and deserved service to our student athletes, who had really hoped to play, a lot of them their senior year, perhaps the last time they'll ever play. That's, that's not even a drop in the bucket. And, and it's, it's just really something we should do. How we spend our money is a reflection of our values. And these individuals made a commitment to us. And I think we need to honor our commitment to them.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. I'm not seeing any other hands. Are we prepared to move to vote on this motion? Ms. Robinson? Ms. Coilo? Looking for some head nods. Are we ready to vote? Okay, we have a, a motion on the table to pay 50% of the head coach stipends with a $200 payment to the assistant coaches. We're going to do a roll call vote, again, in alphabetical order by last name. Mayor Cahill?
Madam President, I apologize. Do you mind if I ask one more question before we-
Go ahead. Yes, actually, I, I would appreciate if anyone does have questions or hesitations for the vote, to please speak up. So go ahead, Mayor Cahill.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Dr. Trochek, could you remind us, walk us through what those other stipends were from the, from the last meeting? What were, what were the activities that were encompassed there?
Um-
Whoa, you just, you just muted yourself.
Oh, I keep doing it backwards. I'm sorry. It says mute, so I pushed the button. You'd think after about 87 Zoom sessions, I would have this down by now. So we, we have several positions through our Unit A contract that are stipended positions. Many involve extracurricular activities, including choral, chorus, band. There could be the activities that run either in a fall or winter- the activities that run either in a fall or winter season, acts, uh, things like peer leaders, uh, you know, that run the, uh, peer leader programs, um, people that run clubs at the high school. Um, there are positions that we have that are curriculum stipends, so people that are, uh, working as content leaders at the middle school for math. We have several of those. Um, there are positions, the, the people who run our mentor programs for our new mentor teachers, um, they're, they're on, that is a stipended program. Um, some of the work that gets done through some of our grants are stipended for, for, for some of the work that's done there. So there's a, there's a probably, and I'm gonna, I hope I don't sound, so I think I'm gonna say there's probably 37 to 40 positions, maybe, that we pay stipends for. Um, and, and that in addition to the coaches that coach in fall and winter seasons.
So some, some of, some of what I'm hearing are, are things that are stipended for work done throughout the year?
Yes.
Multiple seasons or multiple rounds?
Yes. And the way that we work stipends, the, the work goes on through the year. We pay them in two sessions. Well, depending if they're a coach, they get paid by the season. If it's a stipended position that goes through the year, they get a payment in the December, January, and then a payment at the end of the year. It's broken down that way.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Ferretti, I believe I saw a hand?
Yes, I, I just wanted to gain clarity. Um, Ms. Sherborne had mentioned that the money would be found from the position they voted not to fill, which was her support role. Um, if indeed we go forward and, and vote to pay up to the 50%, Ms. Sherborne, would that eliminate the funding for your position in the future?
Uh, it would be, uh, it would be eliminating it for this year. I, we'd have to budget something in the next year. So it really has no relevance on this. It would be used for, um, this item. It would, could be returned to the city, or it might be someplace else where we're gonna have a shortfall, you know, because I talked earlier about the revolving funds that the funds are not, you know, we're gonna have to offset like the kindergarten salaries, preschool salaries, so. But there's, right now, that position is not being filled. It would have to be brought forward again in another budget year.
Okay. And how do you feel about, um, raising the, the payment up to 50% in terms of financial, like finding that additional money? How, how does that, uh, put us in your eyes? Because you're the financial guru.
Right. I, I, I do feel that I will be able to find that because I do know that there was 20,000 set aside and, um, for that. So I do know the money is there available. You know, one thing that we did add here is that we would like to have, we would, um, be requesting a log of activities. So I feel that if the, um, amount was going to be raised to 50%, I would like to make it that, um, Mr. Keefe is assured that the people are doing the work. So if we do have any, um, act, any coaches that are not doing something, I would not want to be paying them 50%. But, uh, Mr. Keefe and I have had conversation, and we have, um, talked about this, and we, um, are pretty sure that most people are. There is one particular area where we do not think that, um, anybody has been doing anything. That was the middle school sports, because it really hasn't, hadn't, hadn't taken. So I wouldn't want to be giving 50% to that if that didn't get off the ground. But I could be wrong. He could be wrong. We'd have to just make sure, um, and get that reassured that the people are doing something. Just like what Dr. Shirocheck had talked about on the other stipends, we are assured that people are doing it because they're still even meeting Google meets with their particular groups or the class advisors. You know, there's many advisors that are going on double time because they had to now issue refunds and, um, calculate all of those things too, so.
So, so how would that affect the motion then, uh, on the table if, um, we're voting to pay 50% to, for all athletic stipends?
Just the spring sports.
Would it fall, just for the spring, right, spring sports? Would that fall back on Mr. Keefe to filter out, you know, or do we have to modify the motion to, you know, to those who are deemed that they are engaging in the work even though the sport, the season has been canceled?
I'll let Dr. Shirocheck speak on that. I guess, um, that's where we talked this afternoon.
I don't, I don't remember what the motion is, but I, you know, I, I would say that you, it's simply a log. We're not looking for, you know, anything too much. But we, we were more trying to decide if there were some sports that hadn't engaged in any activities as opposed to other sports, which I know are very actively engaged right now. So, um, you know, it's really tricky because, um, this is, it's unprecedented. Just about everything I do for the last, you know, four weeks seems to be around uncharted waters. So we're, you know, we're just kind of, um, you know, doing the best that we can. And, and I, I think I mostly appreciate the sentiment. I mean, our, we value our employees. We value what they do, and we know they go above and beyond. And so it seems really cruel to have to try to find a percentage number to give or a, you know, make a valued judgment in that way, because what they do is give, they give themselves to everything. So, um, you know, I mean, we're all just trying to make the best decisions that we can as we go forward. So I'm not sure about the motion in terms of whether or not you want to stipulate a log is submitted. Um, I don't really, I didn't really.
I, I would take your guidance on that. I'm not suggesting.
We'll be diligent in, in taking care of that. I mean, Dan would take care of that.
Yeah. And I would put that out to the committee. It was just a thought, uh, when you mentioned the log, you know, is it something?
Well, just so you know, we require logs for almost all of our stipend positions, whether, you know, throughout the year. So people are getting a stipend on something there, that we're tracking their work and what they're doing. That's not a punitive action. That's just how we, we have to make sure that we're having some level of accountability.
I think I see Ms. Visnick's hand.
Yes, I wanted to ask Ms. Sherborne about, um, possible, uh, additional income via savings, uh, based on not only not paying our referees, but not paying the bus drivers, not using any gasoline in the buses, right? We have no spring transportation requirements. So do we expect to have some savings in that general area that we could also potentially apply?
Uh, so I do not have my financial report with me here. Um, but I'm going to say that we probably did have something calculated for transportation that falls under the Transportation Department, um, not the, um, Athletic Cost Center. Um, but, um, I know that we had 20. I'm saying I had 10 already to cover the six that we had. So I, I'm assured I have the funds to do the 50%. So I, I don't want you guys to worry about that. I can find that.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I don't see any other hands. Are we ready to resume the roll call vote? I think that was a thumbs up from Mr. Malady. Okay, uh, Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
It's a nail biter. Um, Rachel Abel, I will also vote yes. It's a unanimous decision to support the work of our coaches and, um, appreciate you bringing that forward and doing the research for us to help us reach that decision. Ms. Sherborne, Mr. Keefe, Dr. Trochik?
All right, thank you. And I am sure they are grateful for that as well. So thank you. Um, all right.
So we're moving on to the extended closure?
Yes. And the, so, so this is, I'm actually, this is gonna actually be quick. Uh, this is really more of just, uh, an update and an acknowledgement, um, of the questions that many of you are hearing from constituents, I'm sure, across, um, the city. Um, you know, as you know, we're, um, there are many, many, um, loose ends, so to speak, that we need to, um, tidy up as a result of that. And, and there are many questions that parents have and that they're asking. And so I, I, I'm not here tonight to tell you that I have the answers for all of these, but I do want to assure you that we are working, um, on them, that there are teams of educators, uh, teachers and administrators who are working hard to make sure that we're planning to address all of these things. Um, the, I, I would also say that, um, Wednesday night, I think it's May 6th, at the Curriculum and Instruction Meeting, we do have an extended remote closure plan, um, you know, that we will be presenting, which will involve, um, each principal. We'll talk a little bit about what's going on in their building. We may have the answers to some more of these questions as we go then. Um, but we are aware of the need to kind of address some of the big, the big picture things, um, transitions for students and families as they move from either pre-K to K, grade four to grade five, grade eight into the high school. Um, you know, making sure that we are able to provide the appropriate transition opportunities and activities and celebrations that, um, that typically happen. Um, I left the seniors to last. There's not one of us who is not, um, uh, understanding the need to celebrate and honor our amazing students in the class of 2020. Um, these students have, and are facing an, uh, something that none of us ever did and probably, hopefully, let's hope, no one will, um, situation. Um, I know that Mrs. Taylor and the administrative team at the high school, along with the student council and the class officers and the class advisors. And, um, I actually attended a, a Google meeting with the seniors that, with the whole senior class that was invited. Um, and they're working together to come up with ideas to do the best that we can and create traditions that are worthy for them and that we can under the circumstances that we face. So, um, we know that this is important. We know that, um, parents are, are wondering and hoping that, um, that, you know, that we can do everything that we can for their students and for their families. And, um, you know, do know that that's the goal that we have. Um, I know there are questions about student-to-teacher connections. This will absolutely be addressed, um, at the SISL meeting, um, on Wednesday the 6th. There'll be conversations about, um, what, what is going on and what we're doing. Um, community conversations, we're working very hard to have, to hold virtual conversations. Um, some buildings are holding parent forums with, uh, parents in general. We work very hard. We're, we have, uh, scheduled a citywide PTO meeting for the citywide PTO. We're scheduling a PTO president's meeting. I know that people are trying to use this time to figure out how do we make sure that we're communicating and connecting and that everyone is, is being heard. Um, there's been questions about grade promotion. I will say that we got guidance from the commissioner, and we believe very strongly that, um, we should, that this, uh, closure should not get in the way of students moving to the next grade. Um, you know, grades come, there are benchmarks that we have at the end of grades that we always hope that students achieve. However, if 90% of the students in the world are not attending school, those benchmarks really aren't very, very important anymore, because no one's, the benchmarks are, you can't measure what isn't happening in a school. So we, we will be spending time, a tremendous amount of time over the next 12 weeks as we prepare for what we hope is a reopening, not, there's unsureties about what that reopening will look like. But, but looking at our curriculum and looking at our scope and sequence and making sure that we are making adjustments and accommodations so that we, um, are taking into account the gaps that will be widened, that, that may have already existed and that may become wider as a result of this. So we're very mindful of that. Um, but we're, this is not, um, an area that we would say it's a reason to not promote someone to the next grade. Um, our food service program continuation, um, actually, Jean, I know that you and, had spoken with, uh, Ms. Liel, and I don't know if you wanted to speak to that?
Yes. Yes. Um, so what we wanted to, um, inform you is that we are currently serving under, uh, the SFSP, which is the Summer Food Service Program. Therefore, we could continue straight through the summer. However, the model could change. Currently, the USDA has issued waivers, which allows, uh, changes in the feeding model that we're currently operating under. Once the waivers change or end, we will need to adjust our delivery of services accordingly. As the state begins to loosen restrictions, the DESE may require districts to operate under the original SFSP feeding module, model, which requires that the children be present and the meals be consumed on the property. This would eliminate home deliveries, and parents would no longer be able to pick up meals for the family. We may also need to operate daily versus twice a week that we're currently doing. And once we receive, um, guidance from the DESE, we will institute the necessary changes, and we'll notify parents of any change of services that we need to implement. And I have Christina on the phone if anybody has any, um, specific questions they want to know about that.
I'm looking for hands. I'm not seeing any hands. We, looks like we're okay on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and, um, in, in going on with that, so literacy, um, the, I think that you're receiving questions perhaps on the summer literacy program and the summer school feasibility. We're waiting for guidance on that as well. I will say that in terms of our, and our extended school year, which runs for our students with IEPs, Bethany Splansky and I are working together. She's, she's putting together Plan A, Plan B, and maybe Plan C to see what would happen in the event of what restrictions are still in place and not in place in terms of providing services for our students, um, who are eligible for them or for whom they're recommended over the summer. Um, additionally, our summer literacy program, um, the mayor's summer literacy program is continuing with planning. Again, we don't know. We're, we're, we're planning. We're putting contingency plans in place, but we're not really sure until we know what the restrictions will be that we have, um, on gathering. So, um, likewise, a fall reopening plan. We have, we are not going to wait. We're gonna have a few different iterations of plans for that. Um, this is a big question mark for all of us. We don't know what it will look like. We've seen, um, lots of articles around other places that have begun opening and the idea that there could be many models and what that could look like. Um, and so we are, have a team that is going to be doing a lot of work, thinking about that and planning. And that will be a huge part of the efforts that we face over the course of the next couple of months. Um, and then this was a, a very, uh, this is a very popular question. We've been getting a lot of, how can students retrieve items from lockers in classrooms? Um, and we are aware that, you know, a lot of students may have left their favorite book or their best sweatshirt or their, um, you know, all of those things that, in their classrooms. We, again, are awaiting guidance and, you know, um, around the restrictions. Um, and we will be, um, putting together a plan for parents, um, to be able to find, um, you have a schedule as to how they can and, you know, retrieve their items and how we will get those cleaned out and, and back to families. Um, so I, again, I'm waiting to hear more, um, from the governor around, you know, the restrictions that are in place around staying at home. Um, and we will be planning to have an organized way for people to be able to do that. And they will follow whatever guidelines we need to follow. So. So those are just some of the items that I know that many of you are facing. I don't know if there's any particular questions on any of them. Um, I'm happy to try to answer any.
So I'm looking for hands. I think Mr. Malady have a question?
I, I think I have all the questions, but.
Yeah.
Um, but I guess, I guess I'll, I'll start off with, with, um, I don't know, there's more of a procedure one. So when, when we do have, I'm assuming like a presentation on the fall reopening plan, um, as a committee, do we, are we going to go back and reexamine what the calendar is going to be? Uh, so for example.
Great question.
I heard from a friend of mine, who's a doctor, that, you know, maybe schools need to, uh, consider that, you know, when this thing comes back in a stronger force in the fall and winter, do we extend, um, the December vacation to two weeks, um, thinking it might take some time, um, getting kids out of the schools, and then pushing the school year as a result of that, um, later on. So I, I'm not making that as a suggestion, but I'm just wondering, do we need to start looking at the calendar much differently and thinking about what would be the best ways to try and, um, you know, coexist with this thing?
I think, I think that's a great question. I think, um, one thing that I would say is we'll probably have to be flexible. That's for sure. Um, I don't, we can't, we, we don't know yet what that's gonna look like. But, uh, you know, clearly, the setting of the calendar is something that goes through school committee. So you're, we will have to do that. Again, waiting for more guidance and more information around, you know, possible plans and possible models. And, um, so I would like to, um, say that I think that much like we did when we start, when we first went into closure, um, our, our goal will be to take a look around, to determine what, uh, is available to us in terms of research, in terms of models, um, and put together the best plan that we can for Beverly. Um, I think that, um, we. I think that we, in terms of our remote learning, that's exactly what we did. When we did some research, we looked around, we found a model, actually somewhere out of Seattle. That began our original plan for our remote learning plan. And we then took it and made it our own. And so I think that's the process, we're going to take a look at what all the models are, we're going to weigh the benefits and we'll make those proposals. And we'll be sharing out, you know, what the various options are. We are in the infancy stages of doing that right now because I think, you know, this is something that it's going to take some thought and planning and it's going to need to work for Beverly. So that, that's, that's our goal.
Ms. Coilo, did I see a hand?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The only other thing I'd say, we have to add one more to it. I've had a lot of eighth grade parents, constituents come to me asking about the iPad returns. Their biggest concern is because some of their kids, three of their children are going, moving on to Essex Tech. While the other two are staying at VHS, how do we get the tablet?
Thank you for that. And then, and there was, that actually is in planning, Mr. Posker and the team at the middle school. That's one of the items on, very active items on their list. How will, what will that look like? We'll be doing, we will need to collect back the devices and, and work in that way. So thank you for that question. That actually is something that is on the list that I would, will be, would add, yes. It would be definitely on this list of things that we're considering.
Do I see any other committee hands? I think Ms. Visnick, your hand is up.
Thank you. Dr. Truchek, I wonder if. I always like to try to frame my question. It is a wonderful thing. We got invited by Joan Lovely as a, as a town, a city to, to participate because we're doing such a great job. And I appreciate everything the teachers have done. However, I think that there is some, there's some percentage of children that we're not reaching. And so I wonder if as you think about these other plans. And maybe I just need to wait till next Wednesday night and attend the SISL meeting. But for us to really talk about what are the numbers of children who are not getting online, who are not participating? Or in the, at the grade levels where we're really talking about pass fail, how many are not passing? And given that group of children, whatever the percentage is. What are we envision for an alternative approach to be able to try to reach those children? Because we can't leave them behind, just like we can't hold back the other much larger percentage that is continuing to move forward.
Yeah. That's a, that's a, that's a great question. Thank you for raising that. In terms of engagement, we are logging and documenting and tracking every student. So we are, we are cataloging and documenting every building principal is keeping a log. Teachers are continuing their outreach. We've asked that they make attempts, multiple attempts a week so that we're not ignoring the fact that there are people that are not engaging. We also, I believe, and Dr. Flaherty and I have talked about a survey to get out to see what is working and what isn't working, to see if we can ferret out some other reasons. I mean, we have some families that we know and we've made continuing efforts to, around devices and internet, internet connectivity. We're working with bootstraps and the human rights, the human rights committee to continue to work with Comcast to try to make sure we can unfold some of those issues that we have. There are some kids who are not engaging, they're just not engaging and they have devices and they have connectivity. And so that's another whole area that we need to figure out what, what do we do and how do we make that happen? So it is very much on our minds. It's, it's probably 25% of all of our conversations that we have every single time we meet. What can we do and how can we do it better? And then what will we do? I am hopeful and I'm not sure what it will look like, but some of the stimulus, I think it's called stimulus money. Some of the money that's coming our way from the governor's education relief act may be made available to us to provide some summer remedial services for students. To try to make sure that they're caught up. So we, and we're working on very different kinds of models and ways to make sure that we're engaging them. So, and, and that is not a Beverly problem, that is a big statewide problem that we're thinking about. I see, Dr. Flaherty, you want to jump in?
Wanted to add it in, in our planning, knowing that we're going to have a very large disparity coming back to the fall. One of our goals, school committee goals is universal design for learning. And we've actually contracted with Lisa Diker and she's going to be doing a workshop to, on May 19th for the entire staff. And for those that can't turn in live while she's doing it, it'll be recorded and every staff member will be expected to watch it before we come back to school in the fall. And the, the lens that she's coming in with is how do we think about trauma and the impact of the loss that students may have? And how do we meet them where they are to make sure that we are bridging all of the unfinished learning that has taken place this year?
That's fantastic, thank you, Dr. Flaherty. Do we have a sense of, of a, of an approximate percentage, Dr. Truchek, of, of students that are simply not engaging? Or in the case of the pass fail, are, are not doing enough work to be considered passing?
That's part of our presentation. That's one of the things, the bullets that we've asked principals to address in each of their schools because it is different depending on the school that they're working on. And, and one of the challenges, we've asked them to also talk about successes, but also challenges that they've faced. Is the older students get, the grades have become an impact. So if students know that there isn't really going to be a major impact on their grade, it's getting harder to keep them engaged in the learning. And so we're trying to work through that as well. But that will all be issues that principals will be addressing individually and as a district when we present at SISL next week.
So I'll tune in, thank you.
All right. And I, I just want to further explain what Ms. Visnick was pointing to. We actually have been asked to testify to the joint committee on education over, at the oversight hearing for the joint committee on education. Where we'll be sending a principal, a teacher and a parent to talk with them. And I think that it's interesting, we didn't go looking for this, I think they came looking for us. So they felt like the feedback they were getting and the information they were looking at based upon our remote learning plan. Is something that they wanted to learn more about how we got where we got. So it's a great honor and we're really pleased and thankful to Senator Lovely for reaching out to us for that. And we look forward to kind of sharing our insights with them at that meeting.
Mr. Malady, is that a hand raised? Go ahead.
It is. And I, you know, I, I don't know what happened to me, well, actually I do, it's a pandemic, but I'm way less optimistic and cheery than I, I used to be. So I'll try to start off with a positive, then we'll sandwich this. So I, I would say in the beginning, you know, I was very proud that, you know, this district, you know, worked with other districts in the, in the nearby vicinity. And came up with a time to close the schools and we didn't wait for, you know, DESI or for the state. You know, we took the courage to, to make the call and I would say, you know, to that, like, you know, we were a little bit ahead on that. And I think over time, just kind of waiting for the drip, drip, drip of information, that anticipation. I know for myself and for some others, like that was, that was almost more stressful. It's like, when's DESI going to issue the next statement? When's the governor going to issue the next statement? And then once the bad news happens, you have your reaction and then, then you move on. I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, I don't want us to be like, you know, the mayor of Amity in Jaws. Like we have an impossible task to reassure every parent and every employee in the district. That when the fall comes, it's safe to go to school. And we all want schools to be reopened, but there's no way as of right now, we can guarantee that to happen. And I just feel like saying a fall reopening is, is, is optimistic, but it's also unrealistic. And I, and I know that, you know, we have like the staff and the capabilities to start talking about, you know, what's the fall going to look like? So we're doing most likely coming up, you know, opening up remotely. So I, I, I think what I'm getting at is it would be nice if the MASC, you know, went to DESI, went to the governor, went to the state house. If Julia, if the MTA came up with a statement, like we need to have like a, you know, a line in the sand moment and say, on this date, like, we don't think we're coming back. And let's over prepare because this isn't going to be, you know, the movie where they, they're not going to find the vaccine in the next couple of months. So let's start, you know, having those tough conversations and, and give people, you know, the hard truth and, and get it going. All right, I'm going to mute myself in one way.
Well, so, so I mean, I, I, I understand your sentiments exactly. And not only is it, is it a challenge for us to decide, you know, what it's going to look like through June 19th? And now that we know that we have that date, we're, we're planning for, with multiple options for an extended summer program for our, our very vulnerable students with special needs. And, and what will that look like remotely for them or what would that look like in some form of a hybrid? So we are not waiting and not doing anything. We actually are going forward with multiple plans, thinking about different pathways. You know, even thinking that if it does open, maybe some people are, you know, we're going to have to accommodate some families that may choose to do something different, right? And so we're aware of all of that and we have a number of people that are, are thinking and researching and, and taking a look. There are, there are options, there are options from Sweden and Belgium and places that have done some soft reopenings already. There are ideas about, you know, phasing it in. There are ideas about, you know, having multiple different options and pathways running at the same time. So we are considering all those things and, and we will be continuing to do that. And we, we're not waiting, but the challenge is waiting for the governor to decide about the restrictions. He is the only one that has the ability to make that decision. And so I think the commissioner has been trying very hard to be ready and prepared for when the governor makes a decision. And I think we're all just doing our best to work together and, and plan the best we can in a time that is so uncertain. And I feel, I think for parents, the uncertainty of, of it all is really, really challenging. For our students, the uncertainty is, I think what Dot was referring to. I mean, there is a lot of different ways that trauma is experienced, right? And we have families that are experiencing trauma at a very, at, at multiple levels. And I read an article about that, you know, not everyone is having the same experience. It's just like the opportunity gap that we've talked about on many occasions, right? What the pandemic has been as an experience for a family that's home with two working parents and three kids trying to juggle all those things is different from someone who, you know, a, a young couple who's married and it's just the two of them. Or a single mother who is trying to figure out how to go pick the lunches up at the high school on Tuesdays and Fridays. So these experiences are just so different for everyone. And we're just trying to do our best to be prepared for whatever comes our way and support our families the best we can in any way that we can. I don't know that any of us thought two months ago that we would be having these conversations at a school committee meeting and, and yet here we sit. So our job right now is to just, you know, buckle up and do the very best that we can and plan in the best way that we can. And, and we're trying very hard. I will tell you, our teachers and our principals have worked so hard to at least reassure families that they're there for them. And you know, our, you know, there's power standards and there's talk about new content. But really our still single most important job that we have is to make sure that our families are safe and healthy. And that we're meeting the, the mental health needs the best that we can and that kids are feeling connected. And that we're doing everything that we can to reassure them that as a school community, we're here to support them in whatever that looks like for them. And the range is, is very broad. There are, Mrs. Taylor's dealing with sophomores and juniors who are really still so concerned about that AP class that they want to sign up for. Or, you know, how is this going to impact their future in getting into college? To someone who's saying, please stop worrying about the teaching, just make sure my, my child is happy. And so we're balancing all of those things and our teachers are doing an incredible job doing that right now. So I, I, you know, I appreciate everybody's concerns and that's it. I'll try, I should go to mute now too, right?
You're giving yourself a very unfortunate transition to the last agenda item of your report.
Yes.
And I, I, I know you want to preface this to the committee and I'll let you go for it, if that's all right?
Yes, so, so yeah, my, my next agenda item, and I, I promise to go quickly. And I, I know that you all know, oh, let me get my slides to go over that. You know, one of the things that I am, that I had been charged with doing as the new superintendent was to create an entry plan. And to implement that entry plan to kind of share with all of you my findings in, in what I did. And so what I have here is an entry plan that was supposed to be delivered on March 11th. I don't know if that date sticks in anyone's mind at all, but it was two days before the closure. And so I believe that it, it, so at first I thought, oh my gosh, is this like an exercise in futility to sit here and show that everything I found about the Beverly schools up until March 11th? And then now what we look at and what we experience is very different. But, but I did a lot of reflection on it and I think that it's a really good opportunity to remember who we are and what we do. And it's, it can serve as a really strong baseline for us. And you know, just because we're not, there was a video that's going around and we, we were going to show it, but we knew this was going to be a long meeting and I think we were right about that, Dot. But that, that says school is not closed, right? And we're doing, the school communities are not closed. We're all still here participating in, in the best way that we can. And so we don't want to lose sight of our goals or our objectives or what we have learned is really good about the Beverly schools. So that said, I'm going to just walk you through the presentation that I have. I will go quickly, I will tell you that I have a 15-page document that I will forward to all of you for, for your reading pleasure that supports this work. I did not want to send it out, it wasn't finalized until late Monday and I didn't want to overwhelm everybody with a bunch of heavy reading before the start of this meeting. So I will get that, it will be posted on the website and I will also get copies out to each one of the committee members. So basically, you know, and I, I will go quickly, feel free if you want to, to stop me or ask any questions. But my goal is really just to give you a quick picture of what I learned in the entry plan that I did. Um, these are really the highlights that rose to the forefront during the collection of the data and the process of meeting with all of the stakeholders and engaging in different perspectives and conversations with people. And, you know, so really this is, this is the highlights that jumped out to me as we began the process. So Beverly is welcoming an inclusive community, parents are active and engaged and valued partners. There's a culture of pride that exists amongst stakeholders, that was probably the most resounding thing that I found. And it's built on a longstanding tradition of a really broad range of programs and academic offerings. I don't think there was a single individual I met with that didn't mention that, gee, if you're in Beverly, there's something for everyone. You know, we work really hard in making sure that that's the case. Our school leaders are among, our schools are leaders among districts in Massachusetts. And I did write that before we were invited to speak in front of the joint committee on education. But we, we are seen across the Commonwealth as leaders in reimagining education, our, our focus on project-based learning. Our proactive use of technology. We were early into the one-to-one program at the high school and were recognized by colleagues across the state on, on that. And I think that's really awesome. We continue to provide a strong emphasis on authentic learning and relevant educational opportunities. I think the emergence in the last three years of service learning projects that go on amongst our students and the project-based learning that we do. You know, is not, has not gone unnoticed. Our staff and the schools focus on the whole student and needs are met in a variety of ways. It's really not a one size fits all. We have a lot of people who have worked really hard to identify ways to meet student needs in different ways. And our staff, our teachers and staff on the whole feel valued and supported at a personal and a school and district level. And we have created many powerful learning communities within our schools. And I think that's a real testament to the work that we do in Beverly. This entry plan was, was created on, on the idea of triangulating data from a number of sources. And the triangulation began with data that we could count. So we reviewed and looked at student achievement data, survey data, attendance and discipline data, all of that data review figured into the work that we did. We looked at things we could see. So we conducted school visits. We had shadow days where we followed students around and sat in classes beside them in many different levels across the district. We did instructional rounds where we visited in groups, some of the buildings. And we also did, held observations, did observations just through the many, many walkthroughs that we do throughout the buildings. And then finally it was, what could we hear? So we held student forums, we were, I was. So we held student forums. We were, uh, I was in at least 12 classrooms where we held student forums, where students, um, had the opportunity to answer the same questions that I was asking the stakeholders in our interviews. Um, community interviews, I interviewed each of the school committee members. I interviewed city council members. I interviewed, uh, municipal leaders, um, our, uh, the police chief, um, stakeholders in the community, uh, some of our community members and our community partners. Um, and in addition, um, student presentations on work. So there was a tremendous amount of information that went into the work that we did and, uh, um, the themes that emerged from that. Um, that, these are the people that were engaged in the collection of data. We had, um, uh, we did conduct a parent online survey. We had, um, a faculty survey as well. We had over 240 respondents to our parent survey and 80, over 80 respondents to our faculty survey. Our high school forums incorporated, included about 128 students. And our community member interviews, uh, were, we had 41. And, um, our shadow days and observations were conducted at the elementary and middle school. And, um, and we were visited up to 27 classrooms in the course of that time. So, um, it's not, it, it was from across the district and hopefully touching all things. The driving questions for the entry plan were really what are the strengths that have contributed to the success of Beverly? And what are the challenges that are keeping Beverly students from performing at the highest levels? And then how, given those two questions, do we thoughtfully plan, navigate and bring about change in order to better meet the needs of all of our students? So these are the questions that were driving us as we were collecting the information and as we were sort of reflecting on and assimilating what we learned throughout the process. Um, I, I mentioned already that we conducted interviews, uh, student forums, observations and shadow days. Um, we helped, we conducted our online survey, um, and I think probably most of you were recipients of that survey. But, um, we did receive over 300 responses and they yielded both qualitative and quantitative data. Um, I think it's important for me to mention that, um, the data that we collected, uh, was coded in, um, for me. Uh, Caitlin Orlando is one of our members out here. She, uh, was doing her CAGS program and she, you earned some of her hours for her CAGS program by painstakingly coding data over a long period of time. Um, and so she was able to, to help us in that process. Um, so some of our qualitative questions that we asked, both in the survey and in the forums and in our, um, interviews were what aspects of the school system, what is it that we do well and what should we preserve? And, um, responses included, um, a, a sense of community. People felt that Beverly works really hard to create a sense of community. Um, we, the, all stakeholders highly valued our staff. They, uh, acknowledged that we have highly qualified teachers and highly qualified administrators. And, um, there was a lot of value there. Um, the, the community in Beverly, no surprise to anyone, has a very, um, um, strong, positive, um, opinion of our programs of arts and our arts programs. They're very rich and very robust and, um, that can be seen in any performance, art show, musical, anything that you go to. Um, it was mentioned that communication was, uh, it, so you'll find that on both. But that communication was, was important and that we do a, a strong, we do a good job of trying to provide a communication. The fact that equity is a focus of ours, I think people know that it's, uh, something that we are working towards and that we're keeping at the forefront of decisions that we make. Um, that doesn't mean we've solved the equity problem, but it does mean that we understand the need to uh, make sure that we are taking that into account whenever we're making decisions that impact student learning or actually school communities. Um, our instruction was valued, our work with technology and PBL. Um, the, there was a lot of, there was responses that collaboration and professional development that we offer is strong, um, and so forth. So, um, that's the sort of qualitative responses that were coded into, um, to provide us a, a visual of what we're doing. Um, as well as, uh, there was qualitative responses on what the district most needs to work on. So what is it that we need to work on? And there is equity and equity is, uh, something that we all, uh, not we, the stakeholders that we worked with, that we interviewed, that we met with, um, student forums to, uh, to our online survey. Uh, people recognize that, um, there are inequities in our system and that's something that's really important and, um, that we need to keep at the forefront and we need to be actively looking at ways to make sure that we're equitable and that we're meeting the needs of all students. Um, that people mentioned resources. They felt that we needed, uh, more resourcing in some areas regarding, I think, um, you know, I'm not really, I wasn't really clear on all of it. I think some of it is around curriculum resourcing. Um, I think curriculum resources look very different today than they did in other times. Um, however, I think that's something, uh, there was, uh, some stakeholders who felt we needed to focus on academic excellence and in particular raising the level of rigor. Um, and that's raising the level of rigor in all of our classrooms and for all of our students. I think one of the, um, you know, equity can never be disassociated with anything. And one of the findings that we had was that, um, oftentimes our, we provide very robust and rigorous curriculum to some of our students, but that's not necessarily accessed by all of our students. And so, um, that was a finding that, um, we, we felt, uh, was, was very clear to us that it was, how are we able to, how are we, can we engage, uh, students in advanced coursework and in opportunities? Um, regardless of, um, you know, their, uh, race, ethnicity, privilege, any of those things. So, um, discipline and behavior is a concern for many of the stakeholders. Um, and so, um, we were, we took good note of that. Um, a, a lot of people mentioned the schedule. I think they mean the middle school schedule. And I think they mean just figuring out how to write, how, what, how to read it. Um, I'm not really sure. Um, technology, so technology is a strength and it's also a concern. Although given the current state that we're in right now, um, it's, I believe that a lot of those conversations would be flipped on their head and we would be having, uh, you know, looking at different things. Um, so those were the areas, the qualitative responses around that. Um, we took the information and we put it all together and we said, what are the emerging themes? Like, so what's emerging out of this? What's important for us to take from this information that we need to know? Um, one of the, of the, the main, um, themes that rose again was equity, taking a look at me, making sure that we're meeting the needs of all students. Um, and, uh, a second theme was instructional design. There were, uh, were a lot of conversations about the need for our instruction to be relevant, to be authentic and to be engaging, especially as we move forward, trying to build 21st century learning and, and career and college readiness for everyone. Um, and then finally a third theme was the academic excellence and, and making sure that we're holding high expectations for all students. So, um, these are the three themes that we sort of culled from the data that we looked at. Um, what we, what I did next was take each one of these themes and I broke it down to take a quick look at what were the strengths and what were the opportunities that we saw in those? And then what sort of essential questions were, were, can we pull from there? So, um, I always go back to our goals. This is our district goal. This is the one that exists already. Um, I, another opportunity for me in terms of this entry plan was to take a look at our current district improvement plan, find out places where, within it, where we were affirmed that we were moving in the right direction, but also to identify areas that we might need to make some adjustments to what we had thought, the direction that we thought we were going in. So, um, in terms of this goal, um, we're back to the equity. It aligns pretty much with that first goal. Um, and so, you know, there were some strengths. There are some things that we do in Beverly that are, are wonderful and that are moving us in the direction of identifying, um, ways to meet the needs of all students. Um, uh, our focus on community, we, uh, we have it, we are, uh, a community that enjoys diversity and, um, we have a strong sense of community and inclusion. Our schools are safe, uh, teachers are committed and there are supports that are available for students at all levels. Um, teachers work hard to look at the whole student, focusing on social emotional growth and having the tools, uh, and, and, uh, enabling students to be ready to learn. Um, Beverly is really strong in providing events and activities for community engagement and, um, culture and community, the, this last bullet, I think my thing is in the way. I don't know if I can move that or not. But, um, it says culture and community within each individual school. And one of the things that I think was identified is that, um, each school has its own, um, essence, right? And in its own, in its own place. So, um, that was valued. Uh, in terms of ideas and thoughts, and again, this was, uh, older presentation for the beginning of March. Um, that one of the areas, there were over 30, 25 to 30 respondents that mentioned that Freeful Day Kindergarten for All Students was a key to equity in our district. Um, people felt that we needed to do some work on our social emotional, or I, I think this is the themes that we pulled, but aligning our social emotional curriculum vertically and particularly at the middle and high school. Um, uh, taking a look at our bullying prevention and education and making sure that we resource teachers and train teachers and we implement with consistency, um, our programming around bullying prevention and education. Um, it was mentioned on many occasions by many stakeholders that, um, we could do a better job celebrating our diversity. So we always say, oh, we're diverse, but maybe we're not doing as much as we can in terms of celebrating the diversity that we are. Um, uh, taking a look at recruits, at recruiting practices and making sure that we're recruiting a more diverse teaching staff and identifying and addressing inequitable practices, including implicit and explicit bias. And that means taking a look at our own individual biases that we may, um, bring to what we do. Um, this is just some data. This was one of the quantitative responses that we received on our survey and including in some of the work that we did with our, um, student forums and our interviews. Um, things, you know, that, that there are areas that people recognize that we are doing something great that does address social emotional. Um, there are some things that people aren't, weren't as familiar with. So this gave us some guidance as to sort of what, what are people valuing and what is known out there? So that brought us to essential questions for growth around equity. Um, how can the Beverly Public Schools examine current programming and identify strategies that provide equitable access to high-quality academic and social emotional instruction to support all students? How can the district work with staff to confront our own conscious biases of race, privilege and ethnicity? And how do we raise awareness about embracing and celebrating differences and preventing and minimizing racial, ethnic, cultural, socioeconomic, religious or gender bias and discrimination in our students in our schools? And so I will say that, that one of the, um, the goals that we have moving into the 2021 school year is, um, a theme of taking a look at, um, implicit bias and what does it mean? And how does it impact our work and how can we, um, help each other and support each other in some of that work? So, um, another area is instructional design. There's our goal. Again, we have strengths, leaders in technology, project-based learning, um, availability of devices, uh, steam and project-based learning and a visionary approach to cutting-edge technologies. Um, here are some areas that were cited as opportunities that we could do better. Um, this was prior to the remote learning. Um, and several stakeholders mentioned that they had concerns about a reliance on iPads and laptops. Um, that's, I, I, has, there's a little irony there if you allow yourself to think that. Um, uh, standardizing the apps that students were using on devices, um, hoping for a focus on digital literacy, encouraging ecological awareness. I think for sure we can, um, do some, um, more work around authentic learning experiences, especially here in our own area, in our own city, in our own state, what, you know, what does that mean? Um, using the outdoors as a learning environment, more training on project-based learning and more consistency of curriculum across the grades. And again, there was some data that we collected on that. Um, project-based learning and service learning are areas that they, that everyone believes would deepen student learning and that we should examine, I think, um, looking at expansion. Um, and so that brought us to our essential questions for growth, which is how do we leverage the work of our educators in the development of project-based learning to create consistent experience of authentic learning across schools and levels? How can we engage students in experiences that offer opportunities to build their understanding of the global community and virtual world? And how can our students learn and connect with the real world at the local, state, national and global levels? I think it really came through that this is the direction for us, that we, it's the direction and the focus that we want to go in. Um, I think it's, uh, uh, the stakeholders all felt like these were, uh, you know, the, the direction that they would like to see us go in as well. Um, so, and then finally, uh, rigorous and consistent curriculum. Again, there were lots of strengths that were identified. I'll kind of head over to the opportunities just in the interest of time. Um, there is no, uh, other way around it. We have pockets of underachievement. There are areas of achievement gap in our district. We have subgroups of students who are underperforming their peers. Um, we have a lot of work to do on that and we will continue to do that. Um, it's not something that we are not addressing. Um, I think it's a, um, it's something that we continue to look to strategies to be able to improve upon. Um, one of the strategies is the universal design for learning and some of the work that, um, Dr. Flaherty talked about earlier with Lisa Diker and, and our, our ability to work within the classroom and within tier one to meet the needs of all students. Um, we believe, it was, it was, the data led us to believe that, um, we need to take a close look at the grade level core skills, um, by subject in pre-K to eight. Um, and that leads us to the need for a curriculum review cycle to strengthen our vertical and our horizontal alignment on curriculum. Um, there was, uh, a need to revisit science and social studies at the elementary level and continual focus on the executive functioning skills at the, at all grade levels. So, um, our essential questions in these areas. How do we ensure that students in the Beverly Public Schools receive rigorous and relevant instruction that's consistent and aligned both horizontally and vertically? How do we engage students in authentic and relevant instruction to en, and ensure that safeguards are in place so that student outcomes reflect college and career readiness? And I really believe that safeguards is important. A safeguard is really, what's that safety net for the kids that might fall through the cracks? And how do we make sure that we're there and that we're not missing out on that? And then finally, how do we ensure that all students have equal access to resources and are prepared to participate in advanced coursework? So that, uh, brings us our next steps, really, uh, to tap into our strengths and continue to work, um, collaboratively on our student learning, the instructional practices and development of relationships. Um, we really believe that these findings, um, are going to serve as the foundation for us as we move forward into the next three to five years. Um, they're going to drive our discussions, our analysis, um, and we're going to keep them at the forefront. Um, so that we're heading in the right direction. So I'm sorry I went really fast, but given the time, I was trying to keep you all engaged. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I see you looking at the pictures. Isn't that a great picture? That's like super awesome. Um, any, if anybody has any questions, again, I have a, a very, a much longer 15-page narrative that, uh, gives you much more information and describes more in-depth how we did some of these things. So, um,
I'm looking for hands from the committee if there's any questions for Dr. Trocheck on this topic. I'm not seeing any hands. I'm sure it's not because we're not interested, but it's past the three-hour mark. Couple more items and an executive session.
Oh my goodness. All right. Well, thank you very much. And I, again, I would encourage you, if you have individual, if you want to reach out to me, if you have questions about any of the things that I did or that I had, you know, just reach out to me and I'm happy to share them.
Thank you so much. Sorry it was so delayed.
No, that's okay. Thank you. I tried to go fast.
And of course, as you stopped sharing, I lose my desktop and I, um, wanted to jump to just a couple of, oh, I can't minimize that or else I will lose you all. Okay, we won't try that. Um, I, I did want to just quickly hit on a couple of topics. Um, in the packet that was distributed, I provided a copy of an MASC advisory from April 1st, 2020, as well as a copy of the open meeting law, um, open meeting guide from October 2017. And I just wanted to, um, say that I have included these two particular items for reference for just a couple of reasons. I, I first wanted to remind, um, all members about the resources that MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees provides to us, um, through our membership. Uh, they have a, an excellent website, MASC.org. Um, and on that website, they have member resources, publications. Um, each of us should actually be receiving advisories via our school email account. If that's not happening, please work with Ms. Bergeron to make sure that the MASC has your contact information. I know when I became a new member, it was still going to the old member. Um, also they occasionally send out snail mail, so do look in your mailbox for different, um, bulletins and publications from MASC. They, um, represent almost all of the districts in our state. I don't know which state, which districts, um, don't subscribe to their services, but it, it is something that, uh, is very beneficial. I in particular wanted to send this advisory across because I wanted to highlight the seven topics that are outlined. I think that, um, if you haven't already had the opportunity to look at this document and, 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 and sort of absorb what they're suggesting, that I would find some time to do so. Um, and then the, the third reason that I selected this advisory to share with us tonight is to ask us each as school committee members, um, we haven't had the opportunity to have our retreat to adopt our norms and protocols. And we also missed out on the planned open meeting law training that we had. Um, so I'd ask the school committee members to revisit our trainings that we have received to date from MASC along with these. our trainings that we have received to date from MASC along with these resources. And specifically, I wanted to point to the use of social media. We obviously are self-isolating and the social media platform does provide us sort of a window to the world and some sense of normalcy of having communications with each other. And this sort of blends into the next topic. But, but I specifically wanted to point out in this advisory that we, as the third bullet said, should really let our superintendent lead and we should let our district try to handle most of the communications for our district, to make sure that we're consistent in our messaging, to make sure that we are leveraging the, the chain of communications and, and really focusing on the positives of this. That said, the open meeting guide was another document. It had a lot of pages and I only wanted to highlight a few pages. There were pages two, three, and four, and pages 14 and 15. And this fits hand in glove with some of the themes from the MASC advisory. Just warning us about the impacts of social media, the potential problems we could encounter with serial communications, and any sorts of deliberations that could happen outside of meetings. So I would just highlight to you the first four questions in the middle of page two, really ask you to stop and think about whether a topic that you might be talking about with either other members or on social media where multiple members of this body might be seeing it, constitute anything within the jurisdiction of this body? And if it potentially could be considered deliberation outside of an open meeting? So on page three, they actually have a section that outlines what constitutes deliberation. And it specifically states it's through any medium. So no member really should express opinions. I know that it's very helpful to provide facts, links, resources, but we need to be as careful as we can to refer parents or constituents, community members, to the building principals, to the teachers, and to our administration, especially during these times. And then I also just wanted to highlight how on the bottom of this section, a simple majority, meaning any four of us, if we get engaged in a Facebook conversation, could be considered a, a simple majority quorum. And/or if we then share it with any other members, we have created a potential serial communication. So just keep that in mind. The top of page four, it, it basically has, you know, told us even if we don't respond simply by reading comments, we could have considered the comments. And, and we'll just need to be careful with that. Okay? Also, just a little bit more information about what matters could be within the jurisdiction of our group. So it's wide-ranging. Pages 14 talks a little bit about our remote participation. And this is a segue into our final agenda item of the evening, which is going to be our executive session. As we've been doing, we've been identifying that we are recording this meeting. We've been doing a roll call. And in fact, I actually did see Ms. Julia Brotherton joined us in the middle of the meeting. I didn't call that out before, but we can add her to the record. But we need to be super careful as we continue to use the remote participation that we consider identifying who's there, what our roll call vote are, ensuring that we're continuing to have public access to our meetings and in some cases, public participation. But also, when we go into a remote meeting for our executive session, I'm going to need to ask each person to affirm that they are being confidential and that there are no recordings that are being created and that there's no one in the meeting that can overhear any of the confidential conversations that we're having. So I don't want to drag that on too long, but I felt badly that we haven't had our retreat, that we didn't have our open meeting training that had been planned in March and that we just had to, just be super careful in these times since we're meeting remotely and leveraging some of the social media sites a little bit more than usual. Okay. I don't know if there was any questions or comments on that. It was a little bit matter-of-fact. I've lost half of my screen, so I apologize if there's someone raising their hand.
Hey, President Abel, it's Kelly Freddy. I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay.
I didn't know if you could see me on the screen.
I can't. You know, I'm trying to close some tabs without canceling the meeting. Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you for bringing the social media piece up. I do think now more than ever, it's imperative that we all be very mindful of what we're posting out there, even if it's on our personal web, you know, personal social media pages. And if we are commenting on anything relating to schools or things that could be deliberated as a group, that we just really can tread some dangerous waters. So thank you for bringing that up as a topic. And I wholeheartedly support the mindfulness of, of that effort.
I don't see any other hands. I do have the full screen back. Okay. I, I think we've, you know, just got some good reading there ahead of us if we hadn't already taken a look, especially the MASC advisory. And again, that whole wonderful website of resources that they have available to us. With that, we've reached our final agenda item for the open session. So the chair moves to convene an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purpose. The purpose is purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with the teachers, Unit A, because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, and we will not return to this open session. So I have made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. I need to call the roll. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Cuelo?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Freddy?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
And Ms. Abel, yes. Okay. So we will be ending this Zoom session. You have received a link to a confidential Zoom session and I will join you there in a couple moments. This portion of our meeting is ending.